Good morning. Welcome to the June 7, 2011 special meeting of the Glendale City Council. Can we have a roll call, please?
Council members Menuchaian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Friedman. Here. Can we hear your report?
The notice for a special city council meeting of Tuesday, June 7, 2011 was posted on Thursday, June 2, 2011 on bulletin board outside City Hall before you as Director of Administrative Services, Finance, Regarding Budget Study Session Including CIP Fee Discussion Director to Staff Direction to Staff on Potential Fee Adjustments Other Funds and Departments and General Fund Wrap-Up.
Thank you. Mr. Starbird.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Welcome to Study Session Number Nine in the series of study sessions to review the proposed budget for the upcoming fiscal year 2011-12. The topics we expect to take up this morning are a brief overview of the general fund. Just a reminder at this point in your series of study sessions on the fiscal picture for the general fund in the upcoming year, and then we'd like to turn to a review of the WILDan fee study and receive feedback from you on the various proposed fees. As part of the general fund update, we will note one of the strategies is cost recovery to the tune of $1.3 million as one of the strategies in the general fund balancing effort. With that, let me turn to Bob Elliott, Director of Finance. Bob?
Good morning, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The agenda, as Jim mentioned this morning, was we're going to do a short reminder of the general fund budget gap. We went through it in detail back on April 25. We just did some summary slides to highlight the variances. As you recall, we had estimated revenues of $162 million, initial revenue estimates of $162 million, and estimated expenditures at $180 million. That left us a gap of roughly $18 million. The strategies we discussed to, on the resource side, revenue side was increasing the transfer from electric by $2 million. As you recall, we had the closure of the police augmentation fund. There was roughly $3 million pulled into the general fund for this year. Our strategy was to use a million dollars of that this coming year. We had plugged in about $250,000 as a charge back to the utility for police and fire costs. We have yet to identify those, but we are working towards that. As Jim noted, the potential fee increases of $1.3 million, and we'll have a detailed discussion on that following this brief overview. Part of the other strategy was to increase the loan repayment from the redevelopment agency to the general fund by $1.5 million.
We might note on that that although we term it an increase, the schedule that was approved by City Council actually established the level for the current fiscal year.
Right.
As well as next fiscal year, and they're the same. So technically speaking, this isn't necessarily an increase, although we had not recognized the full payment from the GRA in the upcoming year's budget, neither have we yet to acknowledge it in this year's budget. But the schedule that was approved by the City Council and agency had the total loan repayment going to $6 million this fiscal year and $6 million again next fiscal year, which is an increase of $3 million in the total payment. You recall under the threat of the state, we needed to have a fully amortized repayment schedule adopted to strengthen the fact that this loan is an enforceable obligation and thus protect it from the clutches of the state. This would utilize half of that $3 million increase this year, and my recommendation to you as part of the CIP was and continues to be that we transfer the other half of that payment into the capital improvement program.
So those strategies bring us to revised resources revenues to $168.8 million. Recapping the expenditure side, we had $180 million in initial estimates. We had gone through a lot of these strategies as we went through the different departments, the transition of city views to an electronic format, elimination of hardware and software budgets, which was a minimal amount, restructuring the paramedic and paramedic delivery services, suspension of the transfer to the nutritional meals fund, outsourcing employee concessions and the vacancy savings from our hard hiring freeze. All those combined are $7 million.
I thought we asked to cost out individual ones on this slide exactly.
You did, but we're not for the purposes that because we are still in negotiations with the employee groups. So as a result, that is one of the largest items of this category, and so for those reasons, we haven't.
Hiring freeze?
No, no, the hiring freeze, we could, but if you spell out every one of them but that one, then by process of deduction, you can determine how much we're hoping to be able to accomplish in employee concessions.
But what does the hiring freeze have to do with employee negotiations?
It doesn't. It doesn't have anything to do with it. But again, if we carve out all of the costs of each of these individual items, and by deduction, you'll know what our plan is for employee concessions, and we are still in negotiations. So we're happy to share that with you in closed session, but we have not been willing to carve all those numbers out in this setting until we've concluded our negotiations with the employee groups.
Moving to the lower half of the slide, program reductions, these have been modified since we did the library follow-up. So the program reduction, this includes both essential priority and discretionary, $3.9 million. We will go through those as we do the general fund cleanup or wrap-up tomorrow. We've had, we plugged in another $292,000 for reduction in contractual services. We originally had that at $400,000, but we've highlighted out the reduction of the federal lobbyist at $108,000, so that came out of that total.
And Bob, so far, the response to our request to vendors for reductions probably accomplishes this.
I would hope so, yeah.
Yeah, we will likely exceed this because our response from contractors has frankly been very good.
Have any contractors said no?
Oh, yeah.
Majority, probably 75% have said no.
Yeah.
A fair number have said yes, that they would lower their charges by 10% for the upcoming year.
If 75% has said yes, this number would be much, much larger. But it wouldn't all be in the general fund. I mean, some of those contracts are not in the general fund, some are in the special revenue funds. But no, we've had about a 25% positive response so far.
Well, what's our response to those 75%?
Well, as we indicated to them, we'll need to consider whether or not then we come to you with an extension on their contract or whether we go out to bid again on those contracts, and that'll be part of our evaluation.
And they know that.
That's what they were told.
We're serious and that in this economic climate, that failure to.
Oh, yeah.
Work with us.
And we're very serious about it, no question.
Continuing along, we've had the, plugged in $100,000 in reductions from additional tri-city efforts. As you recall, we're exploring further efforts with both Pasadena and Burbank and consolidating various operations.
This is another one where I think we'll exceed this number. I think one program alone could accomplish this one and will likely go beyond this, but we're being very conservative here.
And lastly, as the fire chief went through the expansion of the BLS model, we've plugged in a reduction of the general fund of $500,000. So that gets us to a revised expenditure projection of $168.7 million. And with the modifications to the library, we had shown about a $276,000, $78,000 projected surplus. That's down now to $44,000 with all these changes and modifications.
So to be clear, Bob, as we had originally come to you with a budget that had a little over a quarter of a million dollars in anticipated balance at year-end, if we achieved all of the strategies that we spelled out and if all the reductions were taken that were proposed in programs. So with the direction on library, then that balance is down to $44,000, correct, Bob?
Yes.
To be clear, so you have incorporated all of the direction from the council and the libraries?
Yeah, the $44,000 incorporates all the changes that we've made thus far to this point. Again, we'll go through the program reductions as we do the general fund wrap-up hopefully tomorrow. Additional strategies that we discussed was adding an additional $1.5 million in the GRA loan repayment. Bear in mind that the same $1.5 million, as Jim talked about a few minutes ago, was the portion that we're funding the CIP with.
So to be clear, I'm recommending we not do that. We not draw on this $1.5 million to balance the general fund.
Why?
Because I think frankly, we need to, it will make us more dependent on this loan repayment, and the CIP will continue to suffer, and we need to begin to address the funding needs in the capital improvement program.
The second item on there is the $2 million still available in the transfer from the police augmentation fund. Again, the strategy for that $3 million was to amortize it over three years as we absorb the additional staff from the police augmentation fund into the general fund, although that can be changed if you so desire.
So to be clear, you could utilize this $2 million, but then next year, you won't have any remaining funds in that closed-out fund, and so you'd be $3 million in the hole in the general fund. So instead, I've recommended that we essentially use that over a three-year period as a result, and give us time to build the general fund's ability to absorb these positions and meet that need.
Isn't the police fund, police budget using the police augmentation fund as well?
No, only to the tune of the $1 million now would be the only supplement. Everything else has been brought into the general fund.
The last item that we had discussed was funding the Rosefloat with economic development, and I'm not sure if we ever concluded that discussion.
Pardon me, the Rosefloat is still on the list for elimination. An option could be to fund the Rosefloat through economic development funds.
And the reality is, it's only about $50,000 out of the city budget.
Direct cost.
Direct cost.
Direct cost.
So that was a brief recap of the general fund. That was just to bring it back into perspective. We've done a few changes since the April 25 study session where we went through all these in detail. The key item, as you note, is we do have still a small projected surplus of $44,000. These key items here obviously are all the reductions that, strategies that we've walked through, the majority of those as we've gone through the various departmental budgets. So again, the game plan today was to give this brief overview. We'll then jump into our discussion of the fee increases, and then tomorrow, we'll come back with a wrap-up of the general fund and hopefully get final decisions on that.
Question, and I may have missed it. Did we address the valuation of the burden of the water facility on the general fund?
We have included it in the strategies. We've eliminated the $4.1, $4.2 million transfer. We've depended on the WILDan analysis of the cost sharing between water and electric and the way they spread their allocated cost among those two operations, which resulted in the water fund carrying roughly a $2 million greater cost share and electric being relieved of it. And so we've included as one of the strategies in the general fund budget, increasing the transfer by that $2 million, thus keeping the electric side, call it whole, they don't get any reduction, but they continue to make the, incur the same level of cost. Then there's about a million dollar offset that the water fund has to make over a series of years for its contribution to the 2005 Gladys Drive settlement, and that million dollars is reflected in the liability fund, which reduces the general fund's cost. So in the end, the net impact of the general fund is about a million dollars, a little over a million dollars, and that, of course, is part of the $18 million shortfall that we're facing.
And that's amortized over how many years?
The, I think it was five years for the Gladys Drive liability. So in a very, very roundabout way, the answer to your question.
Yes. So if there's any other questions, we can go into those now or dive right into the fee presentation.
Are there any questions about this section or comments? Okay, let's move on to fees.
What we wanted to accomplish today is to walk through, we had the presentation from WILDan on the fee study that they did, and we, again, just to go through that process, we issued an RFP to about 10 different vendors. The selection was to use WILDan for this study. They have vast experience in doing user fee studies. First time this has ever been done in the city of Glendale. It was a very large undertaking. Armin Harkalian, our new revenue manager, undertook this. Probably wish he hadn't at this point, but it was a tremendous effort, and I appreciate all his hard work. He's been working every weekend and night for many, many weeks on this subject. Again, the process was to go through and identify fully burdened costs when functions are done. Now, that doesn't mean when we identify those costs that that's what we're going to charge. What this does is allow us under Prop 218 is to recapture fees that are based on a reasonable cost. Reasonable costs include our direct labor and benefits of the individual plus any citywide indirect overhead or and/or departmental overhead, and that's what this study goes through and identifies. As was stated when we presented the report, it comes down to policy decisions. Do you want to enforce and recapture 100% of the cost of the fee, or do you want to encourage the activity of which the fee is meant to do? So for example, like building inspections, if you want to encourage that activity, you set the fee where it's reasonable so people will actually have it done. So there was that whole policy decision. We have worked with staff, we have met with every department multiple times. What you have before you, and we'll get into it in the PowerPoint, is this document here, which is all the recommended fees that we're having to put forth this year. What I'm going to do in the PowerPoint presentation, I'll have Armin walk through the recommended, some of the highlights of some of the fees, some of the increases, primarily the increases and the new fees. And the majority of those are in community development, and the department heads are here to answer any questions you have on those particular fees. Our goal is to have these included part of the budget hearing and adopted as soon as possible, July 1 or thereafter. Again, as Jim mentioned, we've built in approximately $1.3 million into the budget. If we were to adopt everything today, it would be a little bit over $2.2 million, and we'll get into that detail. Again, these are, this is, the study, the report identifies the total cost to recapture if we chose to do so. This fee study recommendations are staff's recommendations to where we should set the fees, most of which are, vast majority of them are unchanged from our current fees based off staff's recommendation. There are a number of new fees and increases. So with that, let me have Armin come up and introduce Chris Fisher from WILDan.
Before we get there, let me just interject. Bob has referenced that the staff's review of the fees indicates that if we implemented everything the staff is recommending, you'd increase revenues about $2.2 million or so. The WILDan study, however, indicated that in terms of full cost recovery, you could implement fees that would generate revenues far in excess of that. And I think an issue we need to tackle right on when WILDan comes up is last week, one of the regulars at our meetings raised a figure from the study that indicated, I think he noted $128 million in revenues to be garnered by increased fees, something to do with high-rise buildings. Even though we corrected at the meeting that that was an error in the report in the way a number was brought from one appendix to another, that number has again been repeated on a blog that we're all familiar with, so I think we need to again address that issue right up front as WILDan comes up so we don't continue, as we do in Glendale with some people, continue to repeat an error as a criticism and somehow people think it's accurate. So maybe as WILDan comes up, we can address that first and foremost before we get into the balance of the study.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Armin Harkalian, Revenue Manager for the city. I'm also the project manager for the citywide user fee study. We have the overview of our presentation today. We're going to start with WILDan Financial Services. As Mr. Starbird indicated, we're going to talk about the error that was in the final report, and then we're going to go into the departments. We're going to present the, our staff recommendation by department, and then after each department division, we'll have a summary of the fiscal impact, and then after that, we'll open it up for questions or comments you may have. With that, I'll turn it over to Chris Fisher from WILDan Financial Services. Thank you.
Thank you, Armin. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Starbird, Mr. Elliott, thank you again for the opportunity to be here. I'm Chris Fisher with WILDan Financial Services, and we're the company that has worked extensively with Armin and the staff here to complete the study. I guess first of all, since Mr. Starbird raised the issue, and was my intention to address that as the first point as well, we did note a problem in Appendix B of the report in the section that itemizes the fire inspection fees in particular, where some information from another appendix was mis-referenced. Specifically what it was, was where we provide a projection of revenue that might be achieved if you assumed the fees were collected at the frequency highlighted in the table. In other words, the number of transactions that occur. The frequency information that was brought over was erroneous, and so we corrected that information. There was no change to the actual calculation of the fee. I think that's important to note. The amount that we determined as the cost of providing those services was not changed, just the projection based on an erroneous referenced frequency of those services occurring was what changed. And we noted that, actually had already noted that, and we were just waiting to pull some additional information into the report to update that. You have that updated information now in the report that you all have today, and certainly we'll welcome questions about that, but we certainly acknowledge that and appreciate that the city's understanding as we corrected that mistake.
Let me add, in defense of WILDan, we, your staff and every department, also had plenty of time to review all of the detailed information, and we hadn't picked it out when they had forwarded the initial information to us as well, so we didn't catch it.
You mean people are actually human and do make mistakes once in a while?
Periodically.
Oh.
Or with regularity sometimes.
So just to reiterate what Mr. Elliott summarized, the role of the report, and we're not going to go through the report in as much detail as we did a few weeks ago, but our role was to work with staff, which my colleague Pierce Rossum and another two of my colleagues who aren't here today worked extensively with Armin, to coordinate with each of the departments, the department heads of each department, as well as staff within the department, to collect information in order to calculate, determine and calculate the full cost of providing services relative to each fee that the city collects for those services. And so the purpose wasn't to determine the actual fee that's going to be charged, as Bob said. It's to show for council's purposes and staff discussion and policy discussion what the full cost is, and then to, within that framework, to allow staff and council to make decisions based on where to set the fees within that. So the methodology, just briefly, was again, Pierce Rossum and two of my other colleagues spent time out here gathering information in terms of the amount of time and effort, the staff that works on those activities, use a fully burdened hourly rate, which is developed, to then calculate the cost of providing that service or processing that permit or that fee or whatever that is, and then consolidate all that information together in the report. Pierce now be here for the duration of Armin's presentation to answer any questions or provide any more detail that you guys need or anybody else needs, and if you have any questions, I'll turn it back over to Armin.
Mr. Starbird.
It might be useful, before you sit down, I know you touched on this when we first took up the study, but it might be useful to again describe how you arrive at what we call the fully burdened hourly rates for various positions. Again, that has gotten a lot of attention, implying that somehow that is the salary level for a particular employee. Let's take a sergeant or a lieutenant in the police department where the number is upwards of a couple of hundred dollars, fully burdened. That again has been making the rounds as, oh my goodness, an individual in the police department makes that kind of hourly salary, which we all know isn't correct, but can you touch on that for just a minute?
Sure. I'll give the general overview, and then to the degree there are specific questions, Pierce may need to jump in. There was, I'm not sure, two years ago, three at the cap that was done, cost allocation? About two years ago, the city underwent a cost allocation study, which takes all of the overhead functions, both the central overhead of the city and the departmental overhead, and distributes that to operating activities based upon certain criteria and allocation factors. And we didn't do that cap, so you know, I don't know offhand what those factors and those allocation factors were, but what it does is it distributes that overhead out. Then you take that and layer it on top of the direct cost for employees at various positions in various departments. And so depending upon how that overhead is layered out to the departments, you could have a position in one department with a different fully burdened hourly rate as compared to a position in another department of a similar title. So that's the very general description. I don't know if that's enough for this purpose, but there are certainly situations where you can look at, you know, a position from a central service area like police or engineering, for instance, that might do functions in two different departments and have two different rates because the way the overhead is allocated to those two departments. And certainly, the fully burdened hourly rate is much higher than the actual rate that those folks are paid because you have all of the overhead on top of their actual direct cost rate.
Overhead, which for a police officer can include equipment, automobile, all of the administrative costs.
Technology.
Buildings, technology, everything is built into it, so generally salary will be a fraction of what that total burden figure will be.
If I could bring even more detail to this discussion, just because this was one of the issues, under one of the appendices, we list out the hourly, the burdened hourly rates. So for example, in the police department, a fully burdened.
Which report are you referring to?
The WILDan study.
I have a whole bunch of things here. WILDan, the user fee study? What page?
Page 39.
Did I get this in an electronic format?
Not yet. You will. We just got them.
Okay. I had asked the prior version to be sent to me in electronic format as well, which I haven't received.
So the page 39, we have the fully burdened cost of a police lieutenant in the general fund. On page 40, we have a police lieutenant under Public Works. Now, that happens to be in the parking fund outside of the general fund, so.
Which page again?
Page 39 and 40. So the costs for the police lieutenant in the general fund and then within the parking fund are completely different. The difference is the overhead that's allocated outside of the general fund. So when we have staff, that are general fund staff that work outside of the general fund, that hourly rate is loaded with the additional cost allocation plan overhead cost. So that's why there's a drastic difference between what the cost is within the general fund and outside the general fund.
And just very generally, there's a number of methodologies for allocating out central costs, and it's based upon activities that the operating departments use that utilize central services and overhead services. Sometimes it's headcount or a number of city council items, agenda items, number of computers at various departments. There's all sorts of different factors that can be used to allocate those out, and that's why you see differences in different departments about how that allocation occurs.
So if there's no further questions, let's get back and run through the presentation, and then we can get into specific questions if there are any.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, we're going to start with the city clerk's office. Next slide. Go ahead. Just for the clarification, you have two hard copies in front of you, the PowerPoint presentation, and you also have the citywide comprehensive fee schedule. We have, like Mr. Elliott indicated, we have every single fee, including the comprehensive fee schedule, but for the presentation purposes, we're only listing the major changes that we're going to have with departments, since we have over 1,400 fees and we're limited with time. But please feel free to go over those comprehensive lists and bring up any questions or comments you may have. We have individuals from different departments available to answer those questions.
So just so I'm clear.
Yes.
These are the only fees you're recommending changing that are in this report?
On the comprehensive.
All of those thousands of fees?
Yes. There, we have new fees, they're highlighted. On the very far left side, under comments, we indicated whether it's a new fee, and we also indicated if we're removing some of the fees. we also indicated if we're removing some of the fees.
Which one?
The one on the left, yes.
Okay, so then, how were the ones that are in this presentation chosen?
We only picked the ones that, again, have a major change, depending on the dollar value, the fiscal impact, or if there's a huge frequency number indicated on there. So we kind of picked those, but we also have some recommendations in the comprehensive schedule that you have.
Something I might add, I think it's a very good question, because sometimes it's not, you know, what we present to you that counts as much as what we don't present to you. And so a reasonable question is, what are the other fees that Willdan proposed, and why aren't we recommending that those be increased? At some point, I think we should touch on those a bit. Maybe we do it for some of the major ones in the departments. For example, there were quite a few cost recovery items in the library, but it's very clear in the library system, you're not going to be charging fees, but there are costs that are incurred. That was a fairly large component of the $18 million in potential revenue raising. So you may want to touch generally, once we're done with the presentation, go back and look at the ones that aren't recommended for increase and see if you're comfortable with that as well. Community services, library system, a number of them, we're recommending, frankly, we're not recommending more than we are recommending by far. I think there was $18 million total cost recovery--
It was about 18 million altogether.
And we're indicating here in the general fund, upwards of 2.1, 2.2 million dollars. So there's a large component that where, that the view of your staff is, it's not reasonable to expect that we'd be able to increase those fees.
So increasing the dog licenses is reasonable?
Pardon me?
Increasing dog license fees are reasonable.
Well, it may be reasonable from our standpoint, it may not be from yours, depending on what you can anticipate reaction from dog owners.
If I may, if I could give more detailed information about the dog licenses, the staff recommendation is to--
Ah, that we're starting off with dog license fees. It just seems funny to me.
Are these, do you note here, are these yearly fees? Some of them are yearly and some of them are not.
Yeah, that's correct. We have some yearly, and for dog licenses, we have, they could purchase for three years also. That's correct.
So this, so these dog licenses, is that a yearly fee they pay, or every three years?
Those are yearly. And I have the samples put on the PowerPoint. So the range for the dog licenses, currently we're charging $5.50 to $55. And that varies. If the dog is spayed or neutered, they get a discount for that. We also have senior discount. And for the three-year license, it's $55. So basically, what we're recommending here is $10 increase all across, because we did a time survey for the staff time, and it came out about $10 per license. So if we--
Oh, hang on one second. Mr. Weaver.
Just a general statement. We do these fees today, we mess up because the public lets us know what you do to this particular fee. We do have the ability to adjust that fee structure again, lower, right?
That's correct.
So we don't need to be perfect in this today. The public will--
If I could answer that, yes, you do. What we'd like to do, what we envision is having this woven into the budget process every year. Obviously, with 1,400 fees within the city, we have a lot of existing fees already. What we're trying to do is make sure they're current. By that is, are we addressing any economic increases via CPI? And we'll adjust those as the CPI changes, or in some cases, when they go stale for years and they're not addressed. We'd like to not do that and do it every year and make sure that we're current with the fees. But certainly, council has the option of charging fees or not charging fees.
So is the plan then to, from now on, when we do budgeting each year, to do a fee study?
No, not necessarily do the fee study. We can update the fee study or the actual costs ourselves. Typically, you do a fee study, a major revision, every five years, where you have the consultants come in and take a fresh look at everything.
But every year then, we reevaluate?
Correct. And my staff will do that. We'll fold that into each department presentation for, again, like we're doing now, by department, but we would envision having each department look at the specific fees that they want to address and increase, or any new fees they want to suggest.
And when's the last time most of the fees were adjusted?
I don't know. I believe we adopted a fee schedule two years ago. I don't think it encompassed a lot of changes. Again, though, we've never done a fee study to where we actually identify the cost of producing these different services.
It has been a long time since you've adjusted animal license fees.
I talked about that back in the 1990s, that instead of letting fees go for five, 10 years, then jack them up where the public will really come in and scream at us that we ought to be indexing and doing a review every, so, and so over the years, we've adjusted some, but not a total package like this. This will make it much easier in the years to come for a council to know which fees have to be brought up. Staff will do that work for us. But it's been a very piecemeal up till now.
And one of the advantages to have a citywide master fee schedule is, again, because we'll be consistent with the budget every fiscal year, and also to make it more convenient for the public, they'll have one place to go and just look at the city's comprehensive fee schedule.
Question.
Yes.
Looking at page three of that one report, where it deals with the licensing for the dogs, under the frequency column, there's a number of 815. Does that mean that there's only 815 licenses?
No, actually, that's a good point. We have, we got the frequency, 6,523, we have listed on the PowerPoint on the very first line. But we didn't have the exact breakdown for each line item. So that 815 is just a percentage, average percentage per category. But overall, it's $6,523 licenses that was issued, and with the $10 proposed increase, that's going to be about $65,000.
Mr. Menucha?
I recall when I was on council before 2007, we increased fees, a whole slew of fees, actually. So this is not the first where we're taking a very comprehensive look at fees.
No, this is the first time you've had a Willdan-type study. But no, you have had, particularly in the building planning area--
Right.
Almost every year, those fees are adjusted. We take a look at them. Animal licenses, much less frequently. And frankly, I can recall in my time here, you've looked at them at least once, but usually that ends up in a room full of people and concerns over the fees, and the council generally makes much smaller incremental changes than what we've ever recommended.
But that time, it was fundamental changes to the way we charge the fees. I recall, there was presentations--
Mm-hmm.
--as well as fundamental increases in some of the fees that we charge for permitting--
Especially the planning, building area.
Right.
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah. I might note, too, I know every time, when the council considers fee adjustments, you always also want to look and see what other communities are doing. Obviously, it can't just be based on cost recovery, or you'll get emails and letters about why is Glendale so much higher than some other community. The Willdan study does look at, for all the fees, some other communities, Long Beach, Burbank, and that's in Appendix--
Yes.
That's in Appendix C of the study, beginning on page 66. I'm trying to find my way down to the animal licenses, but of course, that would be something you'd want to look at, is what are other communities charging for animal licenses as well? Generally, you don't want to be out of line with those. I'm told by Yasmin that animal licenses are on 71 in that comparison.
Animal registration.
Animal registration, for example, Glendale is noted as being $10 basic. Burbank, unaltered, is 50. Long Beach, unaltered, is 90. Altered is 20. So other communities have begun to, and altered in Burbank is 15, as opposed to our 10. Altered is 20 in Long Beach, as opposed to our 10. So other communities have taken steps to significantly increase the cost for unaltered animals, and frankly, have gone considerably beyond our rates for even altered animals.
And if I may add, on top of the Willdan study, departments actually did their own comparison with surrounding cities. So all the recommendations that staff is recommending is, we're very comfortable with those numbers. But again, we're open to your comments and suggestions. And since we're recommending $10 increase on the dog licenses, it's up to you whether you want to keep it the same or increase it by $5 or $7. Again, it's, we're going to leave it up to your discretion. Our next item is arcade establishment. Currently, we're charging $100, and staff is recommending $175. We have filming application fee, all other. Currently, we're at 150, but with our time surveys, it's actually costing the city $322 to issue those permits. So staff is recommending to do full cost recovery on that, so we're recommending 322.
That permit per day, they're paying, or--
That's, that's per day. Filming application--
And is that, is that for everybody? Is the city clerk here to talk?
Well, the 150 is just the application fee, so that's a one-time for the filming.
Okay, so that 322 that's being recommended is a one-time fee, not a per day?
It's a one-time, it's an application.
Do they pay per day as well?
If they use city property, they pay $400 a day. And then it depends on whether or not they have some police or fire--
By the way, this is Reed of Ucan, Deputy City Clerk.
Sorry.
And is there a difference depending on budget of the film?
No.
Well, something--
We do take students, and students get a discount on their application. Any other questions?
What kind of discount?
What kind of discount?
How much of a discount?
Oh, $50. They have to pay $100. The average filming company pays 150.
The daily, you said the daily filming fee is $400?
No, that's for use of city property.
So if they shoot on private property, they don't pay a per-day fee?
Not for city usage, not for city property use.
You know, the whole cost of filming issue is one you may want to take up separate from this basic fee, because I know you get feedback at times about the cost of filming in Glendale. There are a number of other fees that will come into play on a filming. They may be fire department inspection fees, police staffing fees. This is basic, the basic fee that the city clerk administers. There are other costs associated with filming, and that may be something you want to take up.
I've actually never had feedback that filming in Glendale is more expensive than filming other places. Having been in that industry, I would think that our fees are probably pretty comparable to the Los Angeles region. But something that we may want to look at in the future, and not now, is to stratify it, depending on budget of film, so that, the way that the Directors Guild does and the Actors Guild does, in terms of the percentages that are paid to talent, where ultra-low-budget films maybe get a little bit more of a break, and higher-budget films pay more. Just something to think about for the future. I mean, I don't, not saying I would necessarily support it, but that's one way I could see of doing that. But I have not heard from anybody I know in the industry that our films are any, that our fees are any higher than Los Angeles or Pasadena.
We do get some complaints, but--
Well, I'm sure, I'm sure you will at times, but there are some communities that have very high fees because they want to disencourage filming in their neighborhoods, and we don't do that. So I see a good amount of shooting around Glendale.
Yes?
What these fees do, they discourage small filmmakers, actually.
Well, that's why I'm saying that we may want to stratify it based on budget and have somewhat of a lesser fee for ultra-low-budget films. But I would only do that if we're still recovering our costs, because I don't think that we should be subsidizing low-budget films either. But with the higher-budget films, that can, their issue is less about the cost of filming and more about finding the right location. So for them, it's less of an issue to pay a little bit. So if we could increase those fees a little bit to make up for the low-budget films, I think that's something we could look at.
We could look at it.
I had a question on the arcade establishment, and perhaps the way that the cost allocation is done. We've had, we have a couple arcades, and they are heavily burdening our police department with calls, arrests, et cetera. So how does, and to me, one call average, or two calls average, is, you know, far in excess of what the, even the recommended fee is. So how do we, how do we properly allocate that? If it was to me, you know, an arcade would have to pay 500, because there's drug deals that go down, there's fights, there's assaults, there's all sorts of crazy things that go on, as we know, just from the one right on Brand Boulevard. So why is that an acceptable fee increase? I think it should be much higher for someone. So I don't know. Who wants to answer that?
Well, as noted in the report, the full cost recovery would be $264. Of that, we're recommending 175, if you chose--
Yes, but not included in that cost figure is service calls, for example.
Three.
Different businesses have different levels of police needs. That generally isn't part of establishing the permit and the fee. The permit and the fee in this case is generally for the regulation and review of the arcades, not necessarily to recover the service costs that they may, because one arcade may be very different than another arcade. If we had a business license, for example, that generally wouldn't take into consideration the service burdens of those uses. It would be the cost of actually administering the business license process. In this case, it's recovering the cost of administering this licensing and its review.
That's all we look at? I mean, we don't look to those other external costs?
Not generally. No, not generally. For example, I mean--
Are we prohibited from?
We are, we're allowed to recover police costs for service calls, depending on the type of call it is. Our ordinances, for example, allow us to respond to false alarms, or to recover costs for excessive parties or noise. But there are limits. DUI, you can, under state law, if somebody has an accident, you can recover for police charges involved in that. General police services, though, then start becoming, depending on how it's characterized, a possible 218 problem.
So how come some of the other cities are charging, let's say, you know, some of them have $100 for an unaltered dog license, including they're trying to discourage people from having unaltered dogs?
Correct.
So how are they able to charge that? Is that because it's within their full cost of recovery?
I think an unaltered dog license is because of their, as you point out, they're trying to encourage individuals to spay and neuter their pets, to avoid the overpopulation from pets and the issues that that entails.
But I think it is, they're able to do that because their total cost is significantly greater than even what they're recovering with the unaltered animals.
It's probably a lot higher.
For example, our, our cost for just the contract with passing the Humane Society is in the neighborhood of $700,000 a year. Conceivably, you could argue, we should be able to recover all of that cost plus administration. Well, you'd never levy those fees. So you've got lots of latitude to set your fees within that level of cost of that program. But for something like an arcade, part of the cost estimate isn't necessarily the service delivery to it, unless it's a type like the alarms, where you have separate fees that recognize those responses.
So what did you, what did you say was the full cost of the arcades?
For the full cost, $264, and staff is recommending $175 for the application.
So what's the frequency? It's like one or two? I mean, it's a very low--
We have 20--
We have 20, we know it up here.
On average, yeah.
We have 20 of them, so it's a couple, if you establish 265, you'd be another $2,000. Every little bit helps.
Okay. On the kennel application, currently, we're charging $25. Staff is recommending $100.
Now, definition of a kennel? Because I think we think of kennels as a commercial use, but here, it's any more than--
If you have five or more dogs at an establishment--
Three or more.
For commercial kennel--
I know.
Non-commercial is three or more. That's correct.
So if you're a homeowner and you have more than three dogs, you have to pay for a kennel permit, essentially.
If you have three dogs--
Three dogs, or more.
Have three or more.
Then you have to pay an additional kennel application.
And I did when I had my three collies, so I know that very clearly.
But well worth it, right, Mr. Weaver?
Down to one now.
And is that a yearly fee?
Yes.
Yeah.
For live entertainment application processing fee, we're recommending $750.
What kind of live entertainment? What is a live entertainment?
If they have live musicians--
If I put up a guitar in the street, I have to pay $500?
It's, well, normally, I think this is for the cafes or restaurants. If there's a live entertainment, they have to get a permit for that. And I believe the city clerk routes the application to different departments for their approval.
I'm sorry, can you explain again what's considered live entertainment?
It's just musicians at cafe establishments, for example.
So someone brings in a guitar player?
Street.
Well, no, in their cafe, they have to pay $500?
Pay--
Oh, it's per year?
Per year, yes. Not per night.
I thought you meant per event, okay.
No, no, per--
For the establishment. But what about the guy that puts a guitar out on Brand and, you know, sings, he sings pretty good, actually? Collects money. Do we charge them?
I don't know, we permit those. It's only if it's a cafe or, you know, restaurant establishment.
Not that I want to charge them, but I'm just curious.
Madam Mayor, Members of Council, we actually looked at that a number of years ago on the Brand area and tried to, as part of a program, to liven up the area with street entertainment. And I think the decision at that time was made not to have either strolling or stationary musicians or others. Right. They're not in this category.
This is really businesses, a restaurant that wants to have live entertainment.
Because I was out on Third Street a couple of weeks ago, and there are entertainers who pay to stand out a certain-
Generally, where you'll see it done is where you need to begin to regulate the numbers of people, where you have a large number of entertainers wanting to come to an area. You'll see regulation come in. But in our case, it really hasn't been problematic and doesn't really fall into this category.
Didn't Hollywood just go through this when they arrested all of the impersonators on Hollywood Boulevard?
They did?
They did, they arrested them all.
That was over, there were a lot of disputes about, and fights actually occurring about their space, and sometimes they're costuming, frankly, and the disruptions that occurred.
And no more Elvises on Hollywood Boulevard?
Only one Elvis at a time.
Mr. Starbuck is correct. However, there are a number of cities and entities that have regulations in place for street musicians and street performers.
Just skipping down, why are secondhand dealers, why do they have a different application than other resellers?
What's a secondhand dealer?
I assume it's somebody-
Like antiques and stuff?
Yeah.
We're currently charging $50 per application, and there's a $200 annual license fee for the secondhand dealer businesses. So, we're recommending to increase the application processing portion by $50. And we're keeping the license-
Right, that wasn't my question. Do you remember what my question was? Why do we charge them differently than other retailers?
For the secondhand dealer application? Now, I'm going to ask the city clerk to help me with that question.
What's the question again?
The question was, why are secondhand dealers charged a different fee, or are they charged a different fee than other sellers?
Like what type of sellers? You mean retailers?
Retailers.
Well, we don't, we don't have a fee for retailers.
Right, so why are secondhand?
What regulation do we do of secondhand dealers, Rita? Can you tell us?
I don't know.
On the secondhand dealers, I think they're regulated by the DOJ, so I believe they still have to submit-
Pawn shops.
Yeah, if it's just pawn shops, I know they have a lot of regulations that other, antique dealers don't have, but does this cover just pawn shops, or is it also antique shops?
It's secondhand, it's not, it's different from pawnbrokers. It's a different one.
So, for example, the Salvation Army store down town, do they, do they have to get one of these?
Well, they're a nonprofit, so we don't-
Oh, so we don't do it against nonprofits?
Because antique dealers don't, don't have the same regulations that a pawn shop has in terms of DOJ regulations. Pawn shops have to record because of theft, people trying to sell things, and they have to record fingerprints for certain items, that kind of thing. But antique dealers in the state don't at this point. So, why are we charging the antique dealers when we're not charging other types of retailers?
I would give it's-
Rita's answer probably is because we always have.
Yeah, and it's in the code.
I don't know, we'd have to look in the code and see what was the purpose for enacting regulation of secondhand dealers.
I move to do away with secondhand dealer charges.
Yeah.
Well, keep in mind, you do have 40 of them that are out there. I'm not sure what they are or where they are.
They're out there.
But you do, you do have 40 of them that come under the category of secondhand dealer applications. So, you may, well, let me suggest, if you have a question, let's bring you back some research on it, and what's out there and who falls into it.
Research on secondhand dealers?
Well, I mean, I can't tell you why we do. In my experience, I don't know why cities would regulate secondhand dealers, but there must have been some purpose to it.
Is there a definition for secondhand?
I think, did Mr. Howard just go to get the code?
No, he just ran away.
Let's, let's come back to this one.
Why, why, we'll come back to secondhand dealers.
Our next recommendation is tobacco retail sales application. We're recommending at $100, and that's per application. And we also have the annual fee, the license fee, currently charging at $225.
Where is that? Is it up there, or?
It's in the comprehensive user fee.
So, it's not up there?
Yeah.
You're not proposing to change that?
That's staying the same, yes. Next slide, please. With staff recommendation, if council approves those user fee recommendations, then we're estimating to increase the revenue by $176,000 for the city clerk's department.
So, the recommendations that you made in the prior slide add up to approximately $176,000?
Not, all of the recommendations are on the PowerPoint. We have it in the comprehensive fee schedule, but they're not on the PowerPoint.
I thought, sorry, I thought this is what you were recommending, so.
These are the highlights with the-
Just the highlights, these are just the-
They're not, this is not all of it?
That's what we talked about in the beginning. The ones that they've pulled out are the ones that either are very frequent, or ones that are a big jump. The ones that are more modest or less frequent, right? You haven't pointed out. But I think that we should maybe discuss each department's fee recommendations before we move on, because otherwise we won't remember. I would be interested in possibly discussing a higher fee for unaltered dogs, because as other cities have recognized, that's, you know, that's an issue, and that's, causes a problem, and has a direct effect on things like us having to go to the Pasadena, send dogs to the Pasadena Humane Society. If everybody altered their dogs, you know, that wouldn't be as much of an issue. Of course, we want to encourage people to register their dogs, and I don't know where that threshold is, where people just stop licensing because the fee's too high. I agree with Mr. Manukian, we should take a look at some point at having a different type of, having different levels of fee based on budget for filming. I'd like to find out more about secondhand dealers. While Mr. Howard's looking for that, does anybody else have comments about?
How about cats?
Cats are, I believe, included in this category, too, under animal licenses.
Licensing cats?
No, it's voluntary.
That's voluntary. You had a large discussion about that a number of years ago.
Yeah, I voted for that, voluntary cat license.
And let me just note, a basic principle of setting fees is, one, you don't want to set at a level that encourages people not to get it, because, and secondly, you have to be able to enforce it. And that has always been the issue with cats, is how then do you enforce it? But with full cost recovery, you may, in some areas, run into a situation where you're encouraging people to not get a, to not get a license. For example, unaltered dogs. A higher fee will encourage people to have their dogs altered, but if you get too high, it'll also encourage people not to bother licensing their animals.
Right, and that's why I'm curious about what that threshold is and what other cities' experiences are. I'd love to find out what the experiences in cities that have these high fees for unaltered dogs, if they're finding more, you know, just less of an issue with dog-
Sure, we'll do more research on that, and we'll bring it up.
Well, we'll make a note of, I've made a note of all of these, and we'll plan on coming back with additional discussion with you and additional information on the ones that you've raised.
And, and, Madam Mayor, Members of Council, on the secondhand dealers, the definition is literally someone who deals in secondhand merchandise, so it's not illuminating. It goes back at least to 1964, because the reference is our prior code, which was a 64 municipal code. Staff is actually trying to dig it up now to see if we can find any legislative history, but-
And is it only a brick and mortar store?
It's only a brick and mortar store.
So, I don't have a conflict, just to point that out.
It doesn't, well, it does, and it also doesn't apply, for example, if you take secondhand merchandise as part of a trade-in, for example, for new merchandise. But it only applies to true secondhand dealers.
For used cars?
Used cars, it wouldn't apply, because they're taking in a used car for the sale of a new car.
Wait, I don't understand then. What's the difference?
The secondhand dealer permit requirements, does, the permit requirement for secondhand dealer does not apply to a new product dealer who takes in merchandise along with maybe the cost of the new merchandise?
Right, but we have car lots that only sell used cars.
And those may be covered by a different section. It wouldn't be covered, they may not be covered by this section, but I've got, we've got staff listening.
Was there a problem in 1964 with secondhand dealers?
No, in fact, my belief is that this ordinance even predates 1964.
If I can, my guess is, this is, this was originally getting to an issue in cities with, you know, today, we think of them as antique dealers, but there were during the '60s, '70s, and '80s, you were having businesses open up that essentially were like flea markets in existing building establishments. This ordinance originally was probably to get to those kinds of uses, not, we think of them as antique today, but the thrift stores, the private kinds of thrift stores, Salvation Armies and Goodwill, they're exempted because they're nonprofit. And we know, in the ones here in Glendale, they run a very good operation. But if you had secondhand dealers in communities back in the days when this ordinance came about, they were a totally different kind of business and character than you find today.
There must have been a reason for that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I know, in communities I was in, going back into the '70s, and I was in Northern California, secondhand dealers were more like junk dealers, and they had businesses on the, on the, on the city, in the, in the business district. And they weren't always of the most reputable kind. I mean, they weren't pawn shops, they weren't the Salvation Army type, they were, you know, used goods. And so, that's probably where these types of ordinances came from, was to begin to regulate those kinds of uses in a downtown area in particular.
I, well, I think at this day and age, it's not very fair.
May not, may not, may not be applicable, and it may not be an issue that you want to continue to regulate in this day and age.
It does go back a number of years, a number of decades.
Sure it does.
Our next department is Community Development Department.
Well, if I may, are we, are, we're concluded on the clerks?
Well, I've, I've made a note to come back on secondhand dealers, higher fees for unaltered dogs, and, and adjustment of fees for filming based on budget level.
And that doesn't have to be in this cycle. That's going to take you a little while to, to figure that out, but at some point down the line.
Just for the record, I'm opposed to this whole fee increase thing. I'm not comfortable, I just got the final version of the Willdan Report. I know we went through it, but I'm not comfortable with it, and the rest of the reports I just received a few minutes ago before we started the session, so I'll make comments on it, but I have to review everything before I can agree on anything at this point.
And these do all have to come back to you at some point in time. So, this is, this is just giving us your feedback. And frankly, we need to see if we're going to be able to reasonably be able to meet the 1.3 million. If not, then we got to do more work on the budget, so that's the purpose here this morning.
So, explain to me, what happens then of the budget that we're adopting? We're adopting the fee structure, you said, for now, and then we'll come back and revisit afterwards, like I had said, or if we can adjust it downward or center?
We may have some of this information for you when we come back and with the, with the fee ordinance and propose changing some of these, but for now, we need to get a sense of the kinds of questions you're raising, the ones that you're definitely opposed to, and the others, if you seem to be okay for now, then we'll continue to walk down this road and eventually bring you back in order.
Will this be prior to the budget adoption?
I don't know, I don't know if we'll get it done before the end of July, but we'll, we want to do it very quickly, because every month that goes by, we lose track of it.
I know, we've got about four more study sessions. We're trying to figure, we're going to have another study session on this. It's going to take a half a day before we can get, what, the budget ready in mid-June?
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, what our anticipation was is to review this and get as, as much definition as we can from you on, on the fee increases. We will then fold those into the budget hearing. We can still modify those during the budget hearing, and then move for having these included in adoption. Subsequent to the budget, we can have those come back with any other things that we want to modify. My fear is if we pull it apart now, that we'll get off track and, you know, it'll be the end of summer before we get these things back.
Well, I'm just trying to, how can we modify until we have the hearing? We can't have the hearing in time to get the budget adopted, so it seems to me, we'd have to be willing to accept what we see for now, and then afterwards, adjust.
Generally, yes. If there's some here you just don't like, then we leave the fees where they are and bring them back at a later time.
Okay, because a budget is just a budget.
Correct.
Your best guess.
Again, if it's very clear the council's uncomfortable with something here, then we probably wouldn't make an adjustment as part of the budget, and we'd bring that back to you at a later time. Mark? Excuse me. Bear in mind, some of these, I mean, from a budgetary standpoint, the impact is minimal. For example, on the secondhand dealers, the impact would be $2,000. So, from a budget standpoint, it's, it's pretty immaterial. There are some ones later on in this discussion, as Mr. Hagani will undoubtedly talk to, are significant to where we want to be in terms of fee recovery. So, the ones in the city clerk's office are a lot of miscellaneous, different fees in different areas. Our attempt is to get these current and keep them current, and then have them under the adopted budget.
Just also a comment that we are looking at increasing fees, however, we're not looking at increasing frequency. I mean, we can achieve the same end by increasing frequency. I'm looking at filming applications. Is there any way we can have a program where we can encourage more filming in the city of Glendale, where it would, in keeping the fee the same and increase the number of filming permits that are issued? And that, that would achieve the same end as increasing the fees.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, certainly, there's elasticity in the frequency in terms of, if we raise it up, there may be a lesser frequency. We haven't looked at that to know what that is. This is based off historical information that we have in terms of the latest in frequencies.
No, no, I didn't mean to put a number there. I meant, you know, the city making an effort to go out and, you know, encourage more filming in the city, basically.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Manukian, council members, we plan to bring a comprehensive report on our filming and our whole program as it relates to filming in the upcoming fiscal year, and I think some of the, the things that you have mentioned, Councilwoman Manukian, will be as part of that as well, in terms of going out there and really bringing more people into the city for filming purposes. So, it's kind of a second phase that we've been looking at in our office of bringing something forward in the upcoming fiscal year, and I think some of those questions will also be answered in that process.
Our next department is Community Development Department. We have Director of Community Development, Hassan Hagani, with his staff here, so if there's any questions, they'll be here to address that. Our first item we have on here is the Design Review Board, new or amended application of old single-family projects, 3,500 square feet and under. Currently, we're charging $707, and we're recommending to charge $1,500. Our next fee category is Parking Use Permit. Currently, we're at 1124, and our recommendation is $2,400. Subdivision, New Mixed Use Condominium or Conversion Per Unit, we're at 279 currently, and we're recommending to increase it to $400. Variance Use, we're increasing it to $8,000.
So, if someone wants to file for a variance, they have to pay $8,000? Is that what that means?
This is a use variance fee, which is very rare and is subject to planning commission review, and is akin to really doing a zone change, in practice.
It's what?
It's akin to doing a zone change. In other words, you're asking for a use that's not permitted in the code, and there were-
Aren't all variances a use that's not permitted by the code?
No, there are standards. There are standards variances and use variances, both of which have been addressed also through other, we, the whole discussion of variances is a good one for Glendale, because about eight years ago, in order to build anything, you would just ask for a bunch of variances, because the code was written in such a way you couldn't meet the code. We have done a lot of work to address the standards that were inappropriate in the code. Now, variances have become greedy, these are very exceptional circumstances, and every variance case that we bring forward has a lot of community interest, and it involves a lot of review and preparation of staff meetings, especially use variances. Use variances have proven to be very challenging for the community to accept, and they, they require a lot of scrutiny at the planning commission level. So, the, the cost is really the same as preparing a code amendment. The same amount of work goes into it, so we are recommending, and, and by the way, everything that we are recommending, we, it was great to have the Willdan Report. What is different in this case than the previous times that we brought planning, planning What is different in this case than the previous times that we brought planning and building safety fee increases with planning, every time we brought everything, we did not have the fully loaded cost. We basically had a planner do an analysis, and we did not have the financial expertise to actually do the fully loaded costs. And this time, we have the background information that shows how much the city is in fact self-soldizing. This doesn't give it, take the use variance cost up to fully recovered cost, but it takes it up several notches to something closer to what we--
How much is the fully cost?
Eighty-one. It's about eighty-one fifty-nine.
About eighty-two hundred. So we're talking about $200.
And your frequency, though, is only five a year for this?
Right. Because since we made the changes in the code, overall, our variance applications have dropped substantially, because we're now addressing those through the standards properly.
So now, the appropriate term for this is a use variance?
This is a use variance. But we're also increasing, we're proposing to increase our standards variance as well, because like I said, we have changed the zoning in many different areas to remove the inappropriate zoning standards and the use standards that we had. So to the extent possible, we're approaching those through proper zoning, as opposed to trying to get around the zoning regulations. Our goal is to reduce the number of use variances and variances in general as much as possible every year, because--
How many variances do we have a year, do you think?
We have, for this fiscal year, which is a relatively smaller load, we have how many variances?
Depending on the nature, it looks like we have somewhere between 20 and 30 a year.
Yeah, but it's a little more than that. Standards variances, because they're broken up, it's probably about 30 to 40.
Okay.
Yeah.
Not counting the Americana?
Yes.
No, there's not counting the Americana. And these are going up a much smaller amount. We're already closer to full-cost recovery on standards variances, but they're not nearly as much work.
I'm noting a standard setback variance going from 2,750 to 3,000.
Didn't council prohibit use variances at some point?
Yes. So the use variances are no longer permissible at the hearing officer level. They're only admissible in certain zones and only by the planning commission.
Severely limited. We did not prohibit them completely. They are prohibited for general law cities.
Also noted, for example, a zone change becomes the same rate as a use variance. A zone change would be going from 5,700 to 8,000. In fact, it's the same fee. A zone change in a use variance are the same fee and the same cost factor.
Would a use variance be, for instance, for a billiard hall, which I know is not allowed in a lot of our areas, or any of our areas?
A billiard hall, you said? Yes. If it's not a permitted use, and they propose to put it in there, it would require a use variance?
Just an aside, can we deal with the billiard hall issue? Because to me, that's such an antiquated prohibition.
We could. We could. And that would, see, that is what we recommend. And we, the first approach we have with the applicants is that if we see that they're proposing a use that should be permitted, or we should revisit it in the code, we recommend that route first. And if that's not the appropriate route, then the use, because there's something really unique about the use and the location, then we go to the use variance. Yes, I see what you mean, and I, and we've heard that from, it's being able to address the issues with billiard halls that are problematic and ones that are not.
It shouldn't be a judgment call. It shouldn't be a judgment call by staff. It should be coded. It should be coded.
The billiard hall things?
No, whatever, I mean, staff shouldn't have a case where an individual says, well, this one, maybe we can go this way or that way. It can't work that way. Or the code shouldn't be that way.
Well, the code allows the individual to make a decision.
Okay, but it shouldn't be a gray area where you can, you can say, well, maybe this individual, well, a billiard hall is okay, but a karate studio, no, you need a use variance. I'm just giving an example.
But I don't make that judgment call. The code makes that call.
But you said that--
But we give options. For example, there are times that we have a project that comes before us and wants to propose a use that's not allowed in the code. And then we look at the use that they're proposing. They have two options. And one option is to go for a use variance, the other option is to go for a code amendment. And we discuss both with them. And in some cases, if we think that a code amendment is justified, and staff would be supportive of that, we'll tell them. We'll say, this is, this is something that staff can get behind. On a use variance, you're subject to a public hearing and the neighborhood reaction, as opposed to the discussion sometimes that, on a legislative action that comes before you at the policy level, that has a, sometimes a better chance of being really discussed at that level. So we give options to the applicants, and they pick what they feel more comfortable with.
Either way, it has to go through the system. I mean, if it's a code change, it has to come in front of us--
Right.
--for the code change. But I agree with that approach, because you have some of these not permitted uses, like billiard halls, which probably was not permitted in the 50s when billiards was considered to be--
A bad thing, yeah.
--a seedy thing. But now, you know, it's different. I mean, look at Charles Billiards, look at a lot of the billiard halls, Hollywood Billiards in Hollywood, that are just as, you know, that are as nice as, you know, as a bar. And yet, they have this burden of, a bar's allowed, but a billiard hall that doesn't serve liquor, for instance, isn't allowed. So the approach where you can change the code and really have council look at it and planning look at it and say, do we really want this to be not a permitted use, I think is a really good, it's a really good procedure to have, instead of either just not permitting it or making these applicants go through this very expensive process. So I applaud your department for taking that approach.
Thank you. You know, I can give you an example of a use variance that was approved last year, for example. There is a, an ethnic restaurant that's really near and dear to the community's heart in a residential area that had been in operation for a long time, and they wanted to serve alcohol with their food. And that, too, to us, did not justify recommending a zone change and changing the, what's permitted in a residential zone. But since it was a unique restaurant in a unique situation, we recommended this route. And the planning commission eventually gave them the use variance, because the community came and said, we love this restaurant, allow it to happen. And, you know, the planning commission went that way. So those are the differences that we have, those judgment calls we have to make, and make recommendations to the applicant. They always, always have the ultimate choice of which route to take. We give them all the options.
Thank you. Our next two categories are new fees staff is recommending. First one is Design Review Board Express Pre-Application. Our recommendation is $4,100, and we're estimating about six frequencies for the next fiscal year.
What's an express pre-application?
This is something that was requested by some of our frequent applicants, and what they said was, we would rather pay more money, pay extra money, and get expedited processing than have to go into the regular line. So this is their choice of--
I remember that, but you haven't implemented anything? And this is, this is three, four years ago. I remember this discussion.
I don't think anything has been implemented at this time.
Maybe it was Plan Check you were--
And how much faster will they get what they need?
This, if the council decides to adopt this as a process that the planning division would have to then implement, would be, it would be similar to what Building and Safety does with express plan check. In this case, we have people who do not want to wait out their turn to be on the DRB hearing, so that takes them pretty much up on the top of the DRB process. And we have, we, I can tell you, with current staffing, we will not be able to implement this, because our current urban design staff will not be able to take on the additional workload. This is meant to pay for another urban designers, much in the same way that Building and Safety uses express plan check fees, to pay for the labor that expresses the process. In this case, we would put it on top of the, they would come to the front of the line, and they would get a hearing and a review and a staff report very quickly. I don't know how many weeks we have thought about, maybe we're thinking about two to three weeks at this point, from the time that their application is complete. And that's, the key point is application complete, something that sometimes the applicants have a hard time understanding.
And our last fee recommendation for Planning Division is Design Review Board Express Pre- and Post-Application, and we're recommending at $6,400. Next slide, please.
I'm not comfortable with these numbers. I have to do more. I have to, I have to look into it more and discuss it with individuals who are actually coming up to your department and get their input on it. I just, I've had too many instances where we've increased fees and done things where, in the long run, the effect has been very detrimental to the community. So I would like, I will ask around and discuss it with some people who are in the business, basically, if I can find some still these days.
So I'm clear on these last two. These are current programs, these are programs which currently are not in existence. And it would be voluntary for anyone that wanted to advance and get a cut in line, so to speak, to the front of the stack of work.
That's exactly accurate.
There's no obligation. I mean--
There's no obligation. This is for the people who are saying, is there a way that I could pay more to get it processed faster? Then, if you were to adopt this process, then we would adopt it and implement it, and we would have to use the money to hire a new staff person to expedite it.
And we've been getting feedback to the point that there are people that want this, so I fully support it.
We're only bringing this because we've had requests. It has not necessarily been something we have wanted to forward, but we have had inquiries about it.
And you'll have to hire an individual to do this?
We would have to hire an individual. I bet you, well, in the first year, we couldn't because there's not enough money selected to do that. But it would have to take a while before we have sufficient money created or revenue created. And we would have to see it for a year, to see if there is enough demand to justify it. If, at this point, but to start the program even, to a pilot program, we would have to get it in the fee schedule in order to see if it even has a demand.
Hassan, this raises a programmatic question of whether or not you'd be able to deliver on this. I mean, if you hire a person to provide the service, then these numbers become neutral to the general fund.
Right.
And if you're going to start the program without hiring a person, then how can we commit that we can deliver the service that somebody pays for and not slow everybody else down?
If we, if we implement this, and there is demand for it, I would come to you with the recommendation to hire a retainer, urban designer for a year, and then farm out this work, and after a year, analyze to see if that justifies hiring a new full-time person.
Well, then, long-term, if it were implemented, you'd have to anticipate that this isn't, this isn't solving our current budget situation.
It does not.
And the revenues noted here wouldn't solve the current budget.
It will not.
So it may be a program you want to consider doing, but I don't think we should be counting the increase as helping to solve our budget gap problem.
There's no way to know. We don't know at this moment, to say. If it generates enough interest, it might, but we don't--
My fear would be, without the person, you wouldn't be able to deliver the services, given how busy your staff is.
You are correct. We would have to hire a, you know, farm out the work initially.
I think we should still do the, go ahead with it, because I've had a lot of requests from architects, from people who apply. You said, you know, they would pay two to three times the amount of the current fee to get expedited service. So this is something that's coming from our customers--
Right.
--that they want. And I think it's worth trying it, like you said, for a year, and seeing if we can make it work.
I just think we have to conclude that the revenue component probably doesn't help us toward 1.3 million.
Absolutely. I agree. It should be a wash.
It should be a wash. It's much like the Building and Safety express plan check. It really doesn't solve the budgetary issues, but it pays for itself.
Thank you. Next slide, please. For Building and Safety Division, we only have three new recommendations. The first one is Appeal and Modification Fee at $160.68, and we're estimating about 196 frequency. Our second fee is Temporary Certificate of Occupancy at $280.80. And the last recommendation is Permit and Plan Check Extension Fee at Neighborhood Services, for the installation of new racks in the, news racks in the public right-of-way, annual registration, we're recommending the full-cost recovery at $68. Currently, we're charging $15. For the Shopping Card Debatement Fee, again, we're recommending the full-cost recovery at $92. The last four items are the new recommendations. We have mandatory point-of-sale inspections for residential units at $505. Mandatory rental housing inspections, not owner-occupied, on a tax bill will be $29. Release of lien after one year or more of correction of violations, we're recommending full-cost recovery of $104. And for the Tobacco Retail License Investigation, full-cost recovery would be $94.52.
Here comes this mandatory point-of-sale stuff again that we haven't even discussed. So it's on here, why? Is this helping solve the budget? An item we haven't even remotely discussed.
Your staff is recommending that you, that you do take the matter up. I think we're the first to recognize that you've already had a lot of feedback in the community from board of Realtors in particular about a mandatory point-of-sale inspection. So I can't imagine that you'd want this number included in the ordinance that we brought to you before the close of the fiscal year.
Yeah, that's what I mean. It's like the others.
This is one of those, you should tell us, don't put this in your overall ordinance, because you're going to have a roomful of Realtors when you do take it up.
That's what I feel.
Yeah.
It's my feedback.
If I may, Madam Mayor, the reason we included these two, these new fees is to at least, this is a good context to start this dialogue. As you know, given what's happening in Sacramento, a good portion of the funding for Neighborhood Services may be discontinued from the redevelopment set-of-site funds. And we know with, regardless of what happens in Sacramento, we were, we have been looking at ways of making, finding revenue sources to fund Neighborhood Services, which I have compared our Neighborhood Services operation with other cities, and the amount of success that our Neighborhood Services Division has compared to the success that I see other cities do, and the cost. In fact, it's a very, very well orchestrated operation with a lot of focus on prevention. If we do not come up with a new source of revenue, we will have half of the funding for Neighborhood Services disappear in a year, and we will, we will have to figure out some other way to pay for it, unless the council, that is why--
But let me just note, mandatory point-of-sale inspections on single-family residential is far different than the code enforcement problem that we currently try to address through Neighborhood Services, and the part that will be impacted through the redevelopment legislation, and possibly at some point through the housing set-of-site implications. I mean, there you're talking about a new program for the city. And I think a couple of you were on the council the last time we took that matter up, and you had a roomful of Realtors that expressed their view. I think some of you that were on the campaign trail already heard from the board of Realtors.
Yes.
So I'm just suggesting, not that we shouldn't talk about this, but we shouldn't assume this as part of our ordinance that comes to you before the end of the fiscal year.
And that's why I just wondered why it's even up here.
Because you will then have a roomful of Realtors down here over that program, and it has far broader implications than, than frankly, trying to find a way to supplement our code enforcement program.
Guarantee you, they're watching this now.
The rental housing inspection, however, I think you'll have the same reaction from apartment owners, but I would argue that it does get to the issue that we're facing with the loss of revenues for code enforcement, because that is the bulk of our code enforcement effort, is in our dense multifamily housing zones. So that's a, that's a little different than the first one. But again, also one you may want to tell us, that you want that brought to you separately, because you're going to have this roomful of apartment owners in the association.
I certainly don't want it here, but this discussion has been around for years now on how to define mandatory point-of-sale, what it means. We don't even know that yet.
Well, if I may, if the city council decides to even allow us to have that dialogue, the next step would be for us to do basically a year of public outreach--
Thank you.
--and meetings with the Chamber of Commerce, with all the Realtors, with various levels of business. This is not something that we would just launch overnight.
And that's why these can't be done as part of--
That's right.
--the year-end ordinance that's going to be brought to you.
All I'm saying is, Jim, they're watching this.
Oh, I completely agree, yeah.
They see that, and the calls are going to start coming, thinking it's a done deal.
Is the rental housing inspections, is that when it changes owner or when it changes occupant?
It is actually a cycle of inspections that happen regularly, the proposed, which is what other cities implement, that the rental housing is mandatorily, I think, every four years. Every four years, every, every building would be inspected.
I think we last termed it systematic, which means that every three or four years, every unit would be inspected. And in this case, it would be for the rental housing stock, not owner-occupied.
Correct. And that already exists in many other cities, by the way.
I'm against that, and maybe I'm biased, because I do have some rental units in the city. So I would like that to come back and go through your year of outreach.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think either of these, whether it takes us a year of outreach or not, would be a question. But I don't think either of these, given their significance and the volatility of them in the community, these should be handled separately from the general fee ordinance that would come back to you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
What's release of lien after one year? What's the fifth, next to the last item? What is it?
I'm sorry, what's--
What is the one next to the last item?
Oh, the lien.
Mayor Friedman, Councilmember Manukian, members of the city council, the Building and Safety Code requires that when a property is found to be in substandard condition, that if the owner has not repaired it within 30 days of receiving a notice, the city is required to file a lien on the property declaring the building to be substandard. When that building is cleared of violations, the property owner is notified of their, their right to have that lien lifted when they pay the recording fee to the Los Angeles County Recorder. Sometimes they do it, sometimes they don't. If they don't do it after one year, we go out and re-inspect it to make sure that we are not declaring a building to be code compliant that has in fact slipped back into non-compliant state. So this establishes a fee for doing that, if they're not immediately responsive in releasing the lien. It's a cost we've been incurring for years, because the property owner's failing to release the lien when they should.
So you keep the lease on for a year, the lien on for a year?
Lean is on until the property owner releases it. The property owner is required to pay the recording fee to the LA County Recorder.
Okay, and we haven't been charging him a recording fee?
We don't charge the recording fee. The LA County Recorder charges the recording fee.
Okay, and the release of lien after one year or more correction of violations, that's--
Because we don't correct it, or they correct it after one year, we charge them for, we're going to charge them for releasing the fee? We charge them to go out and re-inspect it, so that we are not releasing a lien on a property that is, once again, in substantial-- a property that is once again in substandard condition.
So after the initial citation, a year later, you go out and check again?
If they come in, if they come in after one year. If they come in within one year of having corrected the violation, we release the lien. If it goes one day beyond a year, then we would re-inspect.
If violation goes beyond the year?
No. If they haven't allowed the lien to go un...
Uncleared.
Uncleared, then we'd go out and re-inspect it.
So they can avoid this fee if they do this within a year?
Right. And probably 70% of everyone, when we notify them that the code enforcement case is cleared, sends the recording fee to the LA County Recorder and does. About 30% don't. And they sit there until they need to do something with the property, and all of a sudden, they come back and do that. So rather than release a lien on, and frequently on, I have to tell you, frequently on those, the property has come back with a violation. And we notify them that to, for us to release the lien, you should, you need to make these corrections. But it's almost a secondary benefit for follow-up code enforcement.
But this is also going to encourage people just to get this dealt with faster.
Yes.
Thank you. Next slide, please.
No, no.
Tobacco.
What's this investigation you're planning on doing here?
Tobacco retail license investigation.
Investigation? What are you investigating?
Mayor, Councilmember, members of the city council. When the city council established a tobacco retail license, there is an investigation that the code enforcement staff does to go out and make sure that they are, that anybody who is proposing to sell tobacco products is in compliance with the city's ordinance relative to tobacco products, but also the state sales requirements for the sale, that they are behind a, they're locked behind a, not locked, but they're behind a staffed counter.
So it's something that we already do and don't charge for?
Right.
So we're not creating a division that's going to go out and investigate on an annual basis, the tobacco retail staff?
This one truly is cost recovery. We're doing it now.
So we didn't establish a fee when we did the license, when we required the licensing?
We didn't book in that one inspection fee. It adds that one component to the fee.
What will the total fee be?
So this would be an annual inspection?
No.
For renewal of the license or what?
One time, it sounds. Is it a one time?
The one time. Wait, I'm sorry, Mr. Starbert, I'm sorry. It's annual.
Annual.
Because we go out, we go out annually to make sure that they are...
In compliance.
That they are in compliance. I'm sorry. Misspoke.
So a new business would come in, or existing businesses with your ordinance were required to get a license to sell tobacco products.
Okay.
This would have that license required to be renewed annually and an inspection of it.
Right. That's correct.
Inspection of the premises to make sure they comply.
How much will the total fee be if this is in addition to what is being already charged?
This would be the annual fee.
It's our component of the city clerk's fee, and we covered that.
So does the city clerk have a fee then for tobacco licenses?
They do, but I think their fee was, was it a one time?
Yes, city clerk does have tobacco retail license.
Tobacco retail, $100?
Application, yes.
An annual reoccurring or one time?
Tobacco.
So it's retail sales application.
We show 133.
Tobacco application currently at $50 per application, $225 annual license fee, and follow-up compliance inspection fee. That's the one, yeah, we're changing to, and actually we're removing from city clerk's category. We're bringing it over to Neighborhood Services to capture the true cost.
If you're a tobacco retailer, how much, what are you required to do annually in the way of licenses and fees currently? Can you tell us from the schedule?
Yes.
Whether it's city clerk or Neighborhood Services. Sounds like there's an annual fee.
There's an annual license fee and an inspection fee that totals, oh, I'm sorry, individually for the license is $225, and the compliance inspection is another $95.
Compared to what currently?
$74.
$74. So annually, they currently have to pay $74?
Yes.
This would take them to roughly $220.
$320.
$315.
Is that right?
It takes them to $320 from $300 right now. $225 plus 74. That's the current fee.
$225 plus 74?
Right. $225 for the license.
The current fee is $225 for the annual renewal.
And 74 for the inspection.
That'll be 94.
But you're showing here current fee zero.
Yeah. This is showing a new retail license.
Is that because it's over in the city clerk's?
Which is where the department's at.
I think the department explained it well, because the inspection fee right now is incorporated into the city clerk's fee. However, in this case, the inspection fee would be transferred to Neighborhood Services, and it will be deducted, it will be removed from the licensing fee that happens at the city clerk's office.
That's correct, right. So it'll be a new fee category for Neighborhood Services.
Let me just understand. The current fee is $225 plus 75 annually.
Correct.
The 75 is not, is not the application fee?
No.
So currently, it's $300, and you're proposing $320, basically?
Correct. That's right.
Okay.
So it should have a $74 current fee on there?
Yes.
Okay. Well, let me...
Because I'm very wary of new inspection programs. This is not, this is not a new one.
No. Does the math work on the increase then? I think it does. $1,100 at roughly...
No, it doesn't.
No?
No. It basically raises about $20,000, $21,000, $22,000.
That's what it would appear.
Unless they subtract it from the city clerk's side, unless they're moving that number over.
I don't know how the 104 would...
But that's the current fee, so it's not an increase in the fee.
Yeah. Mathematically, I'm not sure how the 104 was arrived at, because the 1,100 times 94 doesn't work.
No.
And the 20 times 1,100 doesn't work, so...
Bob, are you, are you doing some addition over there?
1,100 times 94 gets you that number.
Let's just give Mr. Elliott a minute to do his calculations.
Oh, yeah, you're right. That's the 94. So that the 103 wouldn't be correct. It'd be 1,100 at $20.
Which is $22,000.
Which is $22,000 instead of 104.
There, Thomas, 1,100, it'd be...
Take your adjustments.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. So for the Community Development Department, if you were to approve the recommended fees, that would be an estimated increase of about $1.1 million for fiscal year 1112.
And let me just note, if I've kept track of the math correctly, that number...
This will be highly altered.
Yeah. Calling out the ones that you've raised, it actually results in increased revenues, not including the tobacco adjustment we just made.
About 600,000.
About 500,000, because we would have been 565. And let me tell you what I pulled out for separate discussion. The secondhand dealers, DRB expedited, pre-DRB expedited, post, the single-family residential inspection, the rental systematic inspections, and now the adjustment on tobacco inspection. So we're about 500,000 instead of the million one.
But do these numbers take into account the other fees that aren't on here that are in the report?
Yes. It's all inclusive.
So I've just taken from the gross number the ones that we pulled out here. So we're at about 500,000, or roughly 600,000 down.
Our next department is Community Services and Parks. Community Services and Parks doesn't really have many recommendations. They decided to keep most of their fees at the current level. Staff has done a comparison study with the surrounding cities, and there is only a few that they're recommending to increase. Again, we've highlighted some major ones on the PowerPoint, but a more detailed list is in that comprehensive fee schedule. One of the new fees that staff is recommending is the Griffith Manor to charge for standard private rate hourly at $52. For nonprofit rate, $39, which is about 25% discount. And for commercial rate hourly is $78.
That's for the facility that's being built at Griffith Manor, is that?
That's for the facility rental.
Facility rental, not use of the park?
Yes. That's correct. The next fee...
Is it 39? Why don't you just do like 40?
It's actually, there's a, staff has a ratio that they follow. It's basically, it's 75% of the $52, so it gives us $39. And the commercial rate is 1.5 ratio of $52. Food cost fee per event, it's a new fee category. Staff is recommending to charge $150 per event, and we're estimating about six of those within the next fiscal year. The next category is...
Kind of, what is the food cost?
That's for...
So if I have an event and I bring my own food, you're going to charge me to bring my own food?
And that's an event within the facility, not just anywhere?
So if some kids have a birthday party, they're going to bring their own birthday cake, you're going to charge them $150 for bringing...
Mr. Mayor, Friedman, members of the city council, this relates only to the civic auditorium. And it's tantamount to what you would pay as a corking fee if you were to take your own bottle of wine to a restaurant that doesn't serve alcohol. So this is a food service fee.
Great analogy.
For our overhead at the civic auditorium only.
Is that because there's cost to clean up, that sort of thing?
Yep, yep. There's some overhead when they bring their own, or cater their own events. No cost.
And that's only the civic auditorium? Not if they were going to do the same thing at the adult recreation center or...
Correct. Right now, we're only recommending the civic auditorium because it's the most significant facility where this would apply. And the civic is the only facility that, currently, the only facility that permits alcohol.
Thank you.
Just before you sit down, on the, on the, the program outline, not related to fees, but on the program outline that each department did, in your department, there were costs associated with things like adult sports leagues. Yet I look at the fee schedule that Willdan did, and based on fees for things like men's basketball league, we're very close to recovering our costs. So I'm wondering on the program side, in the list of various programs, which were general fund, how it is we have a cost on that sheet related to adult sports leagues, for example? Do you know?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, with that particular question, that would be where a full-time staff person is staffed and paid for out of the general fund and was supporting a enterprise fund program. Part of our proposal is to shift the percentage of that person back over into the enterprise fund so that the fees are coming into the enterprise fund and the staff is paid for out of it.
I don't recall that being part of the program listing. That's something we should take a look at, because it did seem to me, thinking back on those programs in Community Services, things like adult sports leagues, they should be closer to self-supporting. Yet we were carrying a cost in the general fund on the program list, yet I was looking at the fees, and the current fees that we have are very close to the recommended fee for full cost recovery. So it seemed to me something's going on there that maybe we should look at further.
Our next fee category is the sports complex photography permits. Staff is recommending $80.
For what?
For somebody to get a permit, and that covers two hours.
To take a photo?
To take photos.
This is commercial photography only, right?
Yes. Commercial photography includes two hours.
If I take my camera out to the sports complex, you're not going to...
You're good.
To...
No, you're good.
A-wise, okay.
Well, maybe you're not good, but most people would be okay.
This is like, this would be, I would assume, someone who's shooting for a commercial, you know, doing a photo shoot.
Yes. For, basically for profit. Yes. And the next...
So a photographer goes out and they're taking pictures of all the youth baseball leagues. They're doing their team pictures. Would that company pay the fee? I suspect that happens. Little kid, little kid teams all have a photographer taking their pictures on picture day. Will we charge that guy 80 bucks, just to be clear? I'm not saying we shouldn't. I'm just trying to make sure we know what this is.
This is just a fee for professional photo shoots. For instance, a magazine company wants to come out and shoot some professional soccer player shooting a goal and using our facility instead of charging the full film rate. This is a reduced rate because it's a much less, it's a much smaller production.
So if a school's practicing out there, they want to take a couple of team pictures?
There's no fee for that because they're already renting our field for that purpose.
Thank you. Next fee category is the student film permit per day. Staff is recommending $225 for a student film permit.
I'm going to oppose that.
Let's be clear what kind of filming that is.
It's just student film permit. So if they, if they're shooting for a school...
If a student is going to go...
They need to bring a letter from the school, basically indicating that the project that they're working on, and staff will charge them the discounted rate.
Well, let me ask, when they do that, do we close the, they're basically renting that facility, right? We're not allowing other uses?
That's right. Just like the commercial rentals, they're doing the same thing, but students will get a discount instead of paying the full price.
Because it's one thing if they're just shooting in a park, but if they're actually closing a facility or renting a facility...
Are they, is this for a facility or is it just for shooting permit?
Mayor Friedman, members of the city council, it's a facility and/or the ball fields, and it's the cost of reserving a section of the facility or ball field solely for the filming project. It's primarily a college student to come out and work on school projects.
I still oppose it. I just think that we have to encourage, you know, and work together with our colleges and our students to facilitate things. And I just can't see, you know, a project, my daughter goes to high school and they do projects. I just can't see that a student, considering the increase in the fees in colleges and attending colleges, especially there are additional fees for participating in filming programs at the colleges. In addition to that, every time they, you know, do a project, they have to pay fees for facilities. I think certainly the park staff can work around some of these issues to make sure that the facilities are not interrupted and the students are able to do whatever projects they're doing, because the films for the students are not for profit. They're school projects, and I think it's important for the city to recognize that. I'm just opposed to it.
Well, I understand the, that inclination, but I think if the students are asking us to reserve something and not, and close it off to the rest of the public, if they can shoot, if they can film around other activities, that's one thing. But if they're asking us to not let anybody else use that facility, I think they should have to pay for it. And, you know, part of being a student is also learning how to produce a film and to learn about budgeting and to learn about your resources. And I went to film school, and I know that there are student films and there are student films. I mean, there's high school kids who come out who shoot in a park, and I don't think they should have to pay. But if you're talking about a college film that may have a budget, some of these films have budgets that are in the five figures, you know, they just do. They, we shouldn't just be closing off our fields to the kids who want to use it without them having to pay something for that, especially if they're using resources. If they're asking us to open a building, have an employee there, turn the power on, all of that. I sympathize with the students, but I think they should either shoot around and find their own locations. But if they're using a public facility, they should be reimbursing the public for that use.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, I was just informed by city staff that we actually do have paid employee to supervise for the student films also.
You have what?
Employee to supervise for the student films if they need to, you know, open the staff.
What kind of supervision are you doing, the student film?
Student could be a great help.
Expert.
Filmmakers on your staff?
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, yes, I supervise the film permits for the parks department.
I'm sorry, your name, please?
Moni Carrera, supervisor. A film permit, irregardless if it's a commercial film permit with a big company or a student filmmaker, requires a staff person. Normally, our staff arrive on-site at 4:00 to 5:00 o'clock in the morning. They have to get out cones, they secure the parking lot, they post signs, depending on the area that's going to be reserved. And they actually stay with the filming client the entire time to make sure that there's no violations, there's no smoking, drinking, any violations of the municipal code. So we have to pay for that. So the $225 fee is an application fee that we already have... that we already have for commercial rates. And what we thought is to recover our staffing cost is we would just charge them the app fee and waive all the rest of the park fees. And, and Madam Mayor, you're correct. They do expect to completely close off an area because they need it quiet. We even have to have the gardeners turn off all of their equipment. It's a big deal. So we thought we could at least recover staffing cost.
So it's a very formal kind of shoot, much like you've seen in a, in a commercial production.
Correct.
Well, this is not, this is not a student who goes out with a camera and is, you know, taking-
That's correct.
Taking video shots. This is a very formal kind of filming production.
Yes, it is.
Go ahead, sorry.
Just say cost recovery then.
That's correct.
Are you gonna be able to differentiate between a student from GCC who's doing a project who might need to use the ARC for a couple hours, regardless of who's there or who's not, and a big film production?
Well, my sense is-
Two different, two different types of productions you were talking about.
Well, except, not necessarily. They may be two different levels of production, but let's say they wanna have a specific area of the ARC, and they don't want people to be able to come into it while they're using it. They should have to pay for that. If they're just gonna walk around without any staff making sure that people are quiet and they don't intrude into their area, they can go do that. And we're not gonna charge them a fee. But if they want, if they wanna make sure they can have the area and reserve it for their use, and things like people will be quiet, not walk through their area, and their area will be enforced, then they have to pay a fee for that.
And we usually-
So it's a business decision for the students.
That's correct. And we usually have to staff it for ten to twelve hours. They're onsite for about ten to twelve hours. So, pretty long day.
I understand the argument, but again, in principle, I'm opposed to it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next slide, please. For community services and parks, with the current recommendation, it's gonna be eighty-six thousand dollars, five hundred thirty-six. And this is not general fund revenue. This will be the recreation fund.
It's not, it's not general fund increases?
That's correct.
It's enterprise fund increases?
Yes. Our next department is fire department. The first item we have is abandoned, removed under tank, underground tank inspection fee. Currently, we're charging a hundred twenty dollars, and we're recommending a hundred forty-five dollars at a full recovery cost. Fire extinguishing system, under that, other than sprinkler system, staff is recommending full cost at three hundred eleven dollars. High-rise buildings includes five hours of inspection time. Currently, we're charging four hundred eighty dollars, and the recommendation is seven hundred seventeen dollars. On the high-rise buildings, additional inspection time, staff is recommending a hundred sixty-six dollars.
In addition to the five hours?
That's in addition to the high-rise building, which includes the five hours of inspection time. Anything over five hours, there will be a charge of a hundred sixty-six dollars per hour. Permit to operate or maintain includes up to four hours of inspection. Convalescent hospitals, sanitariums, mental hospitals, it's recommended at a full cost recovery, five hundred seventy-six dollars. Place of assembly includes two hours of inspection time. Occupant loads from fifty to three hundred person and not otherwise specified, staff is recommending full cost recovery at three hundred and ten dollars.
What is a, what is a, we're not churches, place of assembly?
No, convalescent hospitals, sanitariums, mental hospitals. These are, these would be medical facilities.
Oh, that's, that's the permit to operate. It says places of assembly. It's pretty general.
Places of assembly could be. Chief here, is somebody here from fire? Can you help us understand what place of assembly is?
Good morning, my name's Jeff Halpert, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Places of assembly are generally speaking, could be restaurants, could be churches, could be nightclubs. They use, these are actually further defined. There are several line items under places of assembly. So if it falls under a specific one, it'll be further defined in the fee schedule.
And we do these inspections annually now?
That's correct.
Annually. The same with the one above it, which is, in fact, I guess all of these, including high-rises, they're all done on an annual basis?
That is correct.
Okay. So you, every place you're currently visiting, under place of assembly, you continue to visit them, but the fee would be three-ten instead of two-forty?
Yes, sir.
Sure. Thank you. Next slide, please. For the fire department, again, we're recommending five hundred eleven dollars for sprinkler system for detached R-three occupancies, which includes three and a half hours of planned review and inspection time. The next two items are new recommendations. Annual fee to operate an underground storage tank, which includes one tank at seven hundred twenty-four dollars, and each additional tank will be a hundred forty-five dollars. The, the next three items-
I'm sorry, let's not leave that one too quickly. Again, these are ongoing fees. So any private business that has an underground fuel tank would begin to pay these fees per tank.
Yes.
Is this, is this general fund?
Yes, it is.
Oh, I see.
Enterprise? Oh, it's hazmat, yes.
Okay. Okay.
And the last three ones are also enterprise fund. Those are in green because staff is recommending to increase it by the CPI adjustment. And the CPI percentage was three point three percent ending April two thousand and eleven. And so the new recommendation will be four hundred ninety-five dollars, eighty-four cents for the hazardous waste management and control fee group of one to nineteen employees. And for the hazardous waste treatment, industrial waste and pretreatment program for annual permit renewal, all categories is recommended at a hundred twenty-three dollars, ninety-six cents. And for the inspection and sampling fee, auto repair jewelry manufacturing is recommended at seven hundred forty-three dollars and seventy-six cents. Next slide. For the fire department, with the recommended changes, there's gonna be an estimated increase of a hundred forty-eight thousand, four hundred seventy-seven dollars. Our next department is the libraries. We, we have the director, Cindy Cleary. I'm gonna go ahead and pass it on to her, and she'll do the presentation for the libraries. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of council, Cindy Cleary, Director of Libraries. And the reason I'm making the presentation is because we made a mistake. And we didn't coordinate well, or I didn't coordinate well with Armin about what our proposed fees are versus the cost recovery fees. So for instance, on this slide, it lists for our nonprofit auditorium fee, three eighty-nine, which is cost recovery, what we're actually proposing is a hundred and fifty. Just as an example, the filming fee, that's pretty close, we're recommending five thousand dollars. I can go through the list, or I can give you a separate sheet that has our proposed fees on it. Or we can come back later and update what Armin has already done. For me?
Can I have it now?
Sure. And as, as Mr. Starbird said, the library cannot charge fees generally, but, for general or for direct public service or library service. But the fees that we charge are filming fees and auditorium fees, or meeting room fees at our branches, and conference room fee at our central library.
Well, Cindy, let's, let's touch on that for a second. Let's say you offer a computer class. Do you view you as not being able to charge a fee for that?
Correct.
But if the recreation department offered a computer class, they could.
My understanding is yes. I mean, according to the charter, the library is forever free.
Well, computers didn't exist when the charter was adopted. Scott, is that, would that hold, I mean, non-traditional kinds of library services they couldn't charge a fee for because it happens to be administered by the library? Let's take computer classes, and you offer computer classes.
Correct.
Those types of fees can be charged. The library is, under the charter, supposed to be open and free-
Right.
-to all participants. But the non-traditional type of additional services were not subject to the prohibition of the charter. Charter's a limitation on the exercise of powers. And that type of limitation, when the charter was enacted, contemplated, making sure the library is open, the books are accessible. But these additional things that have come up, copying costs and the like, are limited charges.
But at this time, we are not-
Maybe something we wanna look at.
We may not think about that.
I don't know what the frequency is, but it may be something you'd wanna look at.
Of course, our non-traditional services are becoming traditional, but yeah, no, I understand Scott's point.
Well, yeah, my point is, if, it is becoming very non-traditional, but if one department could do it, you could charge a fee. If another department does it, you can't charge a fee. Question would be that maybe, maybe a different department should be doing the service, and we don't wanna get there. So maybe, I don't know how many of them you have, but I think just taking a view that because the library does it, you can establish a fee, I don't think that was the intent of the charter originally. And certainly applicable to today with the kinds of services a library can charge. You, you know, there may be some areas where it's appropriate to charge a fee so you can continue providing the services when we're facing cutback in branch hours and that sort of thing. Anyway, having said that, sorry, Cindy, go ahead.
No, that's okay. So, would you like to go over the fees, or?
Not all, you have a lot of fees.
But, but basically, yeah.
You have, you have the current fee and then proposed. When you don't have anything in the proposed, that means it's still the current fee.
Correct.
You're not proposing increases.
Correct.
So you're not proposing zero instead of?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
I just wanna be clear.
Yeah. But if you do look at Armin's sheet as compared to what we're proposing, obviously, we're not doing full cost recovery. We didn't want to increase the nonprofit, especially fees, so much so that it was impossible for nonprofits to use our facilities.
Right. That's one thing I was looking at, the nonprofit fees you're proposing. And, and the reason why I ask is so, because it's not on the slide, I guess. I wanted, for Glendale nonprofits, you're proposing for the central library, a hundred and fifty instead of ninety?
Correct.
And nonprofit means outside of Glendale nonprofit?
Correct.
So a hundred and seventy-five, and commercial is two-ten, basically.
Correct.
Two hundred and ten dollars for commercial. Okay, and we have brand library as well, similar fees.
Cindy, let me ask you-
What's a ticketed event? Where you're selling tickets for an event?
Yeah, where the renter sells tickets to the event.
Okay.
Cindy, on the, on the non-Glendale uses, whether it's nonprofit, I guess in the case it's only nonprofit, but why wouldn't we, are we doing full cost recovery for the non-Glendale nonprofit?
We're not proposing that at this time. Most, I mean, we don't get a lot of renters that are non-Glendale. I mean, we can.
I just don't know, I mean, in these times, it just strikes me philosophically, why would we be subsidizing a group from outside of Glendale that wants to use a facility? It's only at the detriment of your other programs. It may not be a lot of money-
Right.
But just philosophically, it seems to me that if you're not a Glendale resident and you wanna come in and use a facility, I don't know why we'd subsidize that.
And I'm fine with that. We don't get as many renters from outside of Glendale, as I said. It probably would decrease if we raised the fees. But I have no objection to that.
How many, in general, how many events do we have with non-Glendale organizations that are nonprofits?
That are nonprofits, I think six last year.
And the Chevy Chase brand library, we usually don't-
Chevy-
Rent out for events?
Yeah, in the past, we have not rented out Chevy Chase, and that, those fees are-
How big is it?
Chevy Chase?
In terms of accommodations?
Well, it's a full, full access to the library, so I think it's five, six thousand square feet.
Okay.
Any questions or comments for Cindy?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. So for the libraries, we'll go ahead and make the revision, and we'll-
Well, I saw, I saw two categories, nonprofit and then, nonprofit, we have a non-Glendale. And then, non-Glendale, individual and commercial. I think we should look at what the, what the full cost recovery would be. I mean, obviously, we don't wanna, we don't wanna end up not having any business because at least we would be recovering something. But we should look at how far we are from the proposed fees and what a full cost recovery would be.
Certainly. Next slide.
So these totals, we don't know-
Yeah, we're gonna skip that. Yeah, we'll have revised numbers. Our next department is the police department. On the false alarms, we have two types. There's, the first five is, you know, if there's a false alarm and there's a permit in place, they get the first two false alarms at no charge. And staff is recommending to keep it the same. Also, the third one is recommended to stay the same. However, starting from the fourth one, staff is recommending to increase it from a hundred fifty to two hundred dollars. And then on the, the fifth one, increase it to three hundred dollars. The, the next category is the false alarms with no permit. The staff is recommending to increase from a hundred fifty dollars for the first incident to two hundred fifty. The second false alarm, increase it to three hundred. Third false alarm to three hundred fifty. Next slide, please. Fourth one will be at four hundred, and the fifth false alarm is recommended at five hundred dollars.
Are these per year?
These are per incident, and-
No, I mean, the fifth over a period of time?
Within, normally, it's within twelve-month period, so if-
Year.
Within a year, yeah. The next category is the local criminal history letter. Staff is recommending to increase it to thirty dollars.
What is that all about? How does that work?
On the-
Madam Mayor, members of council, what this is, is that many times when our residents travel abroad and are going through the visa process, it requires a local criminal history letter. And so we author in excess of about three hundred of these annually. That becomes part of the visa process.
Is this also for immigration purposes, aside for visa purposes?
Yes, it could meet that need too. But again, it's focused only at, at local criminal records here in the city of Glendale.
This is a program we had some problems with about ten years ago?
We didn't specifically, but there, there could be abuses with this.
We meaning not-
Not the police department or city department, but? That's correct.
Involving these criminal history letters and-
That's correct.
It needs a stamp or something? How is it actually?
Yeah, they, they are official documents, official, original documents generated by our records bureau. So they're, they're closely regulated, they are official.
And that's enough time? I mean, that's enough cost?
Well, they, this, yeah, yes.
Looking through the records and verifying names and addresses and socials, and then a letter being prepared and coming before a captain, or I presume or someone of authority to approve the sign of the letter.
Councilman Nigerian, that's correct. And that's, the reason for the increase is that the study looked more specifically at the time and motion involved in completing the task, so it more appropriately aligns with cost recovery.
Thank you, chief. The next fee category is the post-impounded hearing charge. Currently, we're charging thirty-two dollars, and we're recommending to charge seventy dollars. A repossession fee, we're recommending to charge nineteen dollars and fifty-one cents. And for the traffic accident report, it's recommended to charge it fourteen dollars and sixty-three cents.
I'm sorry, before we leave this slide, chief, I think we should make sure we touch on the false alarm response fees, because you'll get some, you'll get some reaction from the community on those at times.
And if I can, just in, in a very general sense, obviously, false alarms account for our largest amount of fees. And there are really two issues that we, that we wanna accomplish here. One, we wanna create an incentive where people who have alarms in the city will get the proper permit, hence the grace, if you will, for the first two incidents of a false alarm. So that's, that's number one. Secondly, what we, what we wanna do is bring consequences to bear on the repeat offenders. Obviously, in this city- Obviously, in this city, we believe that we still need to respond to false alarms. Many cities, when they have chronic offenders, they take them off the list for response. We don't believe philosophically that we should do that in this city, but certainly, we want to create an incentive to change the behavior when we have repeat offenders.
Chief, these frequencies seem awfully low. Have we got that much compliance now, that we only will have four a year?
When we're looking at four or five repeat false alarms, that's correct.
Really?
And so, we implemented this structure about five years ago, five, six years ago, and it has had a very positive effect, so.
Okay.
We think increasing the fees to align a little more appropriately with the industry will even help that effort further.
Okay, here's some more false alarm responses, in numbers that I've been more familiar with. So, these that would go to 400, false alarm response, no permit for, oh, I see, this is no permit on the fourth call?
That's correct.
Okay, so if you get a permit, and then you still have false calls, it's lesser amount because you have a permit?
That is correct.
I see, okay, okay.
Just comment, the local ragged town wrote a comment that the police came to my house on a false call, because, as he reported it, for spousal abuse. I was beating my wife up with witnesses there, and he reported it, except he didn't report the entire statement, which in the police said, the telephone line had briefly got off, setting off the alarm. The police routinely came to the house, there had been one of the false ones, but I'm accused of spousal abuse because of the AT&amp;T line. So you do get those calls, telephone lines can go out and...
We do quite frequently, we get false 911 calls. Right, that is correct.
And I will say, usually during any heavy rain, they get one from my house, and I don't even know it's being made.
You haven't beat your wife up lately?
Well, I've stopped beating up my wife.
That's good.
But, seriously, we don't even know what's happened, and every time there's a heavy rain, your folks, I'll get a rap at the door at odd hours of the night, and there's a police department, because they've gotten a 911 call through the AT&amp;T system, and of course, they answer it, and there's no one there to pick up, so it hasn't been uncommon for us to have a police officer knock on our door because of a false call.
And that's very true, and it has nothing to do with behavior in the residence with the phone, it was systems related.
System.
I didn't really completely understand it, but in dealing with AT&amp;T, they have implemented technology and legislation to fix that problem, because it was generating quite a few false 911 calls when no call was actually made.
Just this, in January, February, two at my home.
Well, you know what happens when you get to three, four, five?
Yeah, well, I hope not, because we're not, we're not making the calls, because I have quit beating my wife.
Chief, if I could make a suggestion, on the traffic accident reports?
Yes, sir.
That we increase that to $20. Our reports are generally available after seven days, 10 days. City of LA takes months, and their fee is, I think, $23 or $25.
That's correct.
Cost savings alone, the people involved in these, whether it's the insurance companies or the individuals, is well worth the extra money. That would be my suggestion, too.
Dan, point well taken, and we concur with that recommendation.
And most of it's paid, not most, but a large number of these requests are by institutions, either insurance companies or law firms, et cetera.
That is correct.
So, I think the impact to the individual will be minimal.
That is true.
To check the Willden report, make sure we can justify a $20 based on cost. I don't know what the number is. The other comment I'd make is, on some of these fees, like the repossession fee, the traffic center report, we should at least be rounding up, nothing else, so your staff isn't having to make change if somebody comes in for a report, but 1951 and 1463, those...
And that was our comment as well, I think there was a desire to be very specific in terms of the actual cost recovery.
We can do that.
But if we can round up, if we can legally do that, that would be our recommendation.
Yeah, we can round up, but the question would be whether we go to $20, because 1463 was full cost recovery under the Willden report. We may not legitimately be able to go to 20, but you could certainly round up.
It's worth it. The $15 is well worth it for those people that are...
Yes, sir, we concur, we concur.
Again, with staff recommendations for police departments, obviously, this number will change. We'll take a look at the traffic accident report, the full cost recovery, to see how much it's actually costing the city.
How much?
So we'll, yeah. So we're looking at roughly $100,000 for the Police Department for fiscal year 11/12.
I have a question for staff before we move on. We've had a few items where there wasn't consensus. Have you noted those, and do you want to get that consensus today?
Our preference would be to, yes.
So, the one that I remember was the student filming, where you're closing, where they're renting or closing down a facility. Do you, can we just, should we take a vote, or can we at least hear from the colleagues that we haven't heard from?
I haven't...
A straw vote, yeah.
I would, I would support the indicated fee increase.
Same here.
Okay, so now you have consensus. Was there anything else?
That was it. Mike?
Yeah.
The Mike?
Pardon me, the second-hand dealers, which wasn't a large item, the DRB, numbers pre and post.
Now, was the DRB, was that only for the expedited?
It was only the expedited, the two were the expedited, yeah. Then, of course, we noted that we would bring back separately the single-family residential inspection and the systematic rental inspection.
Right.
And there was a, the tobacco inspection. I noted a number adjustment because we hadn't noted the existing fee, so we had, the number was larger than 100,300.
Right, but that's not something where there was a lack of consensus, that's bookkeeping.
None of those was a particular disagreement.
Okay, as we go along, if there's any other item like that, that I missed?
It's just the one, yeah.
Please let us know, and we'll do a straw vote, and try to get you some answers today. Okay, so let's move on to Public Works.
All right, our last department is Public Works, and staff is recommending for excavation permits, $661.33.
What is that exactly?
I'm going to pass it on to Steve, sir.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, that's essentially to dig in the public right-of-way.
Oh, in the public right-of-way?
Dig in the street, to dig in the, to take up the sidewalk. It's mainly utilities who do that, and it's mainly our own utility who does it.
Okay.
So, we're increasing the fee on our own utilities?
Yes, they're considered a client, they pay their way. Just like we all pay permit fees when we build something, depending on which department it is. Water and Power pays their permit fees as well.
766 frequency, we have?
Yes.
That often, public right-of-way is?
That's a pretty fair amount, Mr. Menucha. You know, that's, that's a, that's a good busy year, but these include anything from potholing in the street to locate a utility to laying down pipelines, so the size and type can vary.
It's not just our utility, I would think cellular installations, where they're digging up the sidewalk.
Oh, yeah, Madam Mayor, it's primarily the utilities. The telephone company and the gas company are under franchise, so they have a little bit different procedure we go through. But any of the other utilities, the cable companies, or anybody who may be coming in to put something down, if there's a fiber optic line or something like that, they would pay to dig in the public right-of-way.
Well, anticipating a challenge by Harry Zavos, are we double counting, because I know Willden is also doing a study on the burden of the water on the general fund, whoops. So to the extent that they're already counting street issues, digging, that are being borne by Public Works, and then we're talking about these fees, I imagine these fees would be an internal transfer.
Yes, Mr. Najarian.
So, I want to make sure that we're not challenged or sued because we're double counting.
To my knowledge...
Todd, are you?
My knowledge, we're not.
Okay, I mean, let's make sure that we're, that we're not double counting the impact on the water fund, the impact on the general fund by water utility activities.
Let me try and address that. Madam Mayor, members of the council, the citywide cost allocation plan, just to refresh your memory, is allocating the internal service departments, so Public Works does not participate in that exercise. It covers the city clerk's office, city treasurers, my operation, all the internal HR, all the internal service departments, and pushes those costs out on a myriad of different bases to all the user departments. GWP happening to be one of those departments that we charge cost allocation services. This type of fee is outside the realm of the cost allocation, so no, it would not be.
There's no double...
No.
Double counting.
The next line item is sidewalk dining permit. Staff recommending at $649.55. And also easement and dedication fee at 5,200...
But sidewalk dining, is that an annual fee or a one-time fee, annual?
Annual fee.
Okay.
Why is the, why is the Public Works charging sidewalk dining permit?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Menucha, it's the public right-of-way. This is, this is where eating is...
Shouldn't the city clerk be charging it?
It has fallen to Public Works to manage it as a right-of-way issue. So we'll go out and do the measurements, the calculations, make sure it's safe. Actually, there's a little neighborhood services in here too, as far as enforcement. And just the verification, we currently do have a fee, it's $50.
It's $50?
$50.
So the...
It's not a new fee, it is a, an increase in an existing fee. And this adds tables, this adds tables for restaurants outside of the zoning code, and puts them in the public right-of-way, where a lot of these, for instance, on Brand Boulevard, we will have to clean up as well, as part of our overall maintenance effort.
If they were to change the zoning, or to get a, if they were to add more tables inside their restaurants, that would be a significant charge for them, right? I mean, this is quite valuable to them, to be able to add these tables.
That, that's our position. Obviously, this, this fee is based on the actual time spent. It's fairly labor-intensive for us to process these, but it is valuable, very valuable, I think.
Do we do a survey occasionally, because all of a sudden, you can see tables sitting outside where there used to be parking spaces, or parking lots, and all of a sudden, there's tables there, and pretty soon, there's covers over to keep, and decorations on the tables. Do we do a survey occasionally to find out?
As part of our, Mr. Weaver, as part of our enforcement, we will look at those things, where we see somebody who doesn't have a sidewalk dining permit, we'll see somebody who is going beyond their existing sidewalk dining permit, there's extra tables. One of the biggest things we have is encroaching too far out in the right-of-way, and then cutting off the path of travel, so we lose our ADA path of travel. Some of these encroachments where you'll see overheads, as you said, railings, and those kind of things.
Put it in parking lots, would that fall under this, outside, on sidewalk?
If it's a city parking lot, yes, it would fall to this. If it's a, if it's their private parking lot, it would come under...
Private parking, and it's turned into outdoor dining?
That would be plant, a community development.
That would be neighborhood services.
So planning does that?
Yes, if it's a public parking lot, that would go through us, Public Works.
It's the public.
Do we charge when, sure we do, but do we charge, how does it work when somebody wants to put valet and takes out five public parking spaces in front of their business?
Madam Mayor, generally, what we do is to calculate what the annual revenue of those parking spaces are, whether it's metered, or then we have a standard for non-metered, or if it's metered. And then, there's a value based on just having a public parking space, and we assign those to the overall valet fee. So, for instance, if we make $100 a year on a particular spot, then we will include that as recovery when we issue the valet permit. And a business can only get so many spaces, they can't take a whole block, for example. Correct.
How will a business know that they have to go to Public Works to get this?
Sidewalk dining, Mr. Menucha? Well, I, in most cases, that, people will ask the question, find out, and then we'll process it. In other cases, people do it, and then find out that we have a permit, and then we, we don't have, we don't have a late fee or a penalty charge on this, so if somebody goes ahead, you know, and there's a case when somebody will see five different restaurants with tables outside, and think that maybe that's okay, we'll come and talk to them, and they'll come in and get a permit. And the choice is either take your tables off the right-of-way, or come on in and get a permit. And in most cases, as you said, Madam Mayor, there's a value to the restaurant, they come in and get that permit.
And again, there's a current, currently, there is a fee there. Of course, it's not a new fee.
No, it's not a new fee, it's...
The number is again incorrect.
Yeah, it's for $4,000, $4,200 less. Steve, is there a current easement dedication fee? Well, and I'm glad you asked that, Mr. Starbird. Madam Mayor, members of the council, there is not a current easement dedication fee, but I have to be, full disclosure, I have a little bit of heartburn about this, especially the dedication side, and my recommendation on this would be, if the easement is an existing easement that somebody wants to relocate on, or relocate in order to build, that that's something that they should be charged for. A dedication is essentially somebody giving us property to build, for us to build, and I just don't think it's good business for us to charge them a permit fee when we're getting the property to make a public improvement.
Now, why do people do that? Are there times when they benefit financially from doing the dedication?
Madam Mayor, condition of their development.
I see.
So they get, they get to put their development in, and a lot of these will be traffic-related. So, let's say, for instance, you are a corner property out on Brand, we may get some dedication so we can put a right turn lane in to help traffic flow.
But it's voluntary, we're not forcing people to do it.
Well, when it's a condition of your development, you have to... Steve, is their dedication requiring us to do work we wouldn't otherwise do? If that's the case, and I don't think that is the case, if that's the case, then that would be another situation where a fee would be appropriate. Most of our dedications, and quite frankly, I don't know what the split on this is, in other words, of the 25, I don't know what are dedications, what are easements that are new easements, and what are easements that are relocated easements. Again, if we go in and put a sewer line in your backyard, and then tell you we need an easement, and then charge you for the easement?
Right.
Doesn't make, doesn't feel good for me.
No.
But if you want to build over an existing sewer, and that's value to you to expand or build your project, and we ask you to relocate that, or if you can, relocate the easement... Well, this is a sizable number, so we should pin this down. Yeah, and we're, and we're going to do that, we're going to get the split on this. I don't disagree at all with the philosophy Steve's expressed, we just need to make sure of the 130, what's, how much of that is real. That's about a third of what our total is, you'll see, and so I wanted to make sure that I mentioned something there. Obviously, the excavation fee is the majority.
Is there a way to craft the ordinance so that it can take into account those, those different situations?
Madam Mayor, I believe so. I think Mr. Howard and his staff could craft an ordinance anyway we needed it, but I think we can definitely take that.
For verification of conditions and easements for track maps, staff is recommending full cost recovery at $1,603.49. For street alley vacations, full cost recovery is $8,094. And for indigenous trees, we're recommending the full cost recovery at $398.39.
We can't leave trees without...
I don't understand this, is this if Public Works comes in to trim your tree?
Will we be clear as to what this is? Well, Madam Mayor, members of the council, this is if you, as a property owner, want to trim an indigenous tree. So you want to do, as most of you were, went through the trials and tribulations of our indigenous tree ordinance.
I got lucky to miss the big fireworks.
You're lucky. Well, hold on, we may do it again someday. I think we got it straightened out, but this...
Now, our new, our new ordinance that we passed recently allows for a lot more trimming without permit than we had before.
Correct, correct.
So this doesn't affect any of those people.
No, it wouldn't affect that. This is major work that you'd want to do on your tree, or a removal, for instance, for the development or expansion of the improvement on the property, which would include the permit plus, we usually try to get what I call some restitution from the owner, in other words, if they can plant some additional oak trees somewhere else.
And just because Mr. Menucha wasn't here, just to clarify for his sake, that now you can do routine maintenance without a permit on indigenous trees, so this would not be the typical yearly tree trimming?
Well, but it would be, right now, that the routine maintenance is...
I don't have any trees, and I don't do trimming.
The routine maintenance is above a certain percentage, right? Right, we have the size of the branch, and the amount of the wood. So if you've got a, if you've got a very large tree, and you, for the first time in 15 years, you're coming in to do your trimming and clean up the tree, is it likely you'd hit this? Correct. Yeah, in which, in which case, is it, is it per parcel, Steve? So if you have five trees on your property, it's 398, but if you have one tree on your property, it's 398? I believe it's per tree.
But just to be clear, if you have a very large tree, you wouldn't necessarily hit this, because unless the tree was unhealthy, or you were having a problem with it encroaching on your, on your home, you wouldn't have to remove large branches, and you wouldn't necessarily trigger this.
Mayor Friedman, members of council, Dan Hargrave, Maintenance Services Administrator, this is having to do with the impact of a project, for instance, if you have one, if you have one to five trees that are impacted by the project, say it's, most of these, these, we deal with our encroachment-related tree roots.
So this isn't, so this isn't a normal household maintaining their trees, this is in conjunction with the development of a site?
Uh, yeah, yes, or, or if you're, if you're doing an addition, second story, you know, you're getting into the canopies of the trees.
But I'm just, I'm just a homeowner with a couple of oak trees, and I want to have them trimmed up and cleaned up, and, and maybe the first time in 15 years, so it's rather extensive amount of work. This generally wouldn't apply to me?
No, no, not, not generally, this is more impacts on the tree. In fact, for a regular pruning permit, trimming could mean encroach, root pruning as well, for regular pruning permit, we offer that for free, because that's what we want to encourage people to come and do.
Otherwise, $400 would defer people from getting a permit, frankly, then we wouldn't even know about it till after it's done. Okay.
And just a note on street and alley vacations, that's the opposite of the dedication, that's where property, right-of-way property is being-
Given away.
Given to, to the developer. You can see, we don't do very many of those, and it's usually a small piece, but that would definitely be one that we would want to recover the money on.
It's like tonight.
So will the Americana have to pay this higher fee now?
If you pass this, yes.
We're doing one tonight.
Next slide, please. For encroachment permit, the full, full-cost recovery is at $1,659, and that's the staff recommendation. For verification of conditions and easements for parcel maps, staff is recommending at full-cost recovery of $1,517.97. Street tree application fee is recommended at $66.40. And for street use permit, temporary use of streets, sidewalk, parkway, parking lot, or alleys, alleys one to 10 days, one-time fee, recommended at $36.16.
And Steve, what is a street tree application fee?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Starbird, that is in those rare instances when somebody wants to do something to a city tree. In other words, they may have a situation where they've asked us if they can hire a trimmer, and under, with our approval, trim a tree, because we may not be there for three or four years, or they've got something going on where they'd like to be able to trim the tree. We do allow that in certain circumstances, as you can see, it's very, very few, but that would be our street trees.
What, what is our cycle for a street tree trimming? It's a five-year cycle, are we on a five-year cycle?
Mr. Menucha, we're probably somewhere in the, in the seven-year-
Yeah.
Closer to the seven-year cycle. With, with using the outside contract firm, that has, has helped us greatly keep up, especially in the residential block trimming area. But if we can keep it somewhere in the seven-to-10-year, for, for most trees, we try to do palms a little bit more frequently, we're feeling pretty good about that, we've been as high as, as 15 to 17 years, so having it where we are now is very manageable.
The trees look really good.
Thank you.
Compared to a lot of cities.
Mr. Hargrove deserves the credit, and I think when you see a wind event-
Yeah.
That's really the telltale sign that we're doing good. You just, not as many trees down, not as many branches down, you don't see the palm fronds, the, at the level you used to see them here, even in a minor-
In a city I was in, it's a fraction of Glendale's size, it wasn't uncommon during strong winds to lose several hundred trees, out of a, out of an urban forest that's a fraction the size of ours. And we, we never get that many here, which is an indication of a good trimming program.
Next slide, please. With our fee recommendation for Public Works for fiscal year 11, 12, it's roughly about $569,000 in estimated increase. This is our summary, what we talked about by department. For general fund total, obviously, that's gonna adjust, and we're probably looking at roughly 2.1, um, 2 million. You have the number.
Madam Member, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Jason Bradford, Budget Administrator, I've got some updated totals, based on what we've talked about. If I've done the math correctly, the biggest change was to Community Development Department of 675,000, that was for the DRB express check, the point-of-sale, and the tobacco investigation. That new total would go from 1.1 million down to 453,000, approximately. Couple other small changes to City Clerk and Public Works, $2,000 out of City Clerk, so that would go to 174, and Public Works would go down to 565. So the general fund total would now be about $1,500.
What about, what about the changes for the library?
Library, those changes have not been factored in, at that point, in those totals.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, we'll have to circle back with the, the updated library schedule that, that Ms. Cleary passed out. I don't anticipate it being tremendously different than what they have, so. Ballpark, what was the total again, Jason?
About a million five, something.
About a million five, at this point.
Any other, any questions or comments?
Just my initial comments. In general, I will not say yes or no on, on these items, I will look at, since I received these today, I will look, look at them further and consult with some of the experts in the community, in terms of land use and some of the other programs.
If we can answer any questions or provide additional information, be sure to let us know.
I will, thank you.
I do have one card, Herbert Milano.
Thank you, Mayor Friedman, members of the city council, and staff, my name is Herbert Milano, and I appreciate you bringing these issues, I think this is the first time that I've ever seen it being brought up during the budget study session, or ever, where you get a full discussion of the hundreds and hundreds of fees that are presented to the general public. But I, I'd like to highlight the following concepts about these, all of these fees, that is that these are fees that are being imposed in an environment that is, for all intents and purposes, say monopoly. It means that there are no competitive pressures to keep costs down, or to reduce them. So where is the incentive to reduce costs? I keep wondering why is the practice of doing a competitive study with other cities aimed at meeting higher fees elsewhere, or in the case, or the Mr. Najarain's example, of looking and doing the comparisons to cities that are slower and more expensive? I've been in business for a long time, and servicing companies, whose continual effort is to make it faster, cheaper, and better. Here is completely the opposite. You know, it just appears to be that way, but especially making it more expensive. So we don't ask the really basic question about all of these fees, what is the principle or the reasoning behind them? Some of them are to promote a behavior, some of these fees are to discourage behavior, to discourage certain types of commerce, some of the other fees are to simply recover fair costs that need to be recovered, some of the fees are to gather revenues, simply for that purpose, and then to accommodate limited resources, like with regard to parks. But I'm concerned about the fact that all of these fees are being increased for one primary reason. Primary reason that pensions and benefits, specifically having to do with the pensions, the medical insurance, and the work miscompensation, have increased as follows. In the year 2000, those three expenses, meaning payroll expenses, were 19% of salaries. For year-end in 2010, they are 41%. Let me repeat that, pensions, medical insurance, and work miscompensation were 19% of base salaries 10 years ago, and now they make up 41%. And that is the driving reason behind going after, you know, these particular fee increases. And that's the bottom line. The, we cannot consider, for example, you know, putting stuff online, making it easier, looking for particular improvements that actually reduce the costs. And I think that to some extent, they're going to be doing the opposite of what you intend to do. We need to be able to encourage more building, we need to be, people to encourage doing the type of things that are going to generate, you know, more jobs, generate more consumption, to really, you know, kickstart the economy of these locally. And those are the concepts that I wish for you to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions before we, before we adjourn?
Just, our next study session is-
Your next study session is tomorrow, at, from 2:00 to 5:00, although I think we're pushing that back at this point, are we moving forward to the 2:00? Here, so we're, pardon me? Okay, 2:00 to 5:00, we will take up on the general fund review, so tomorrow is where the proverbial rubber begins to meet the road, so to speak.
We still have to finish GWP, so are we doing that tomorrow first?
No, we were doing that later in the schedule.
13.
Okay.
Tomorrow, tomorrow's focus is the general fund.
Okay, thank you, I'll take a moment.
Madam Mayor, if I, if I may, just, just a reminder, we, we will revise all this stuff, this stuff, all the fee projections, as Mr. Bradford was tallying them up, and we will bring them back for your review again during the budget hearing. We will modify the reports and resend them out electronically, so you have this revised, and then we'll go from there, see if you have any other questions at that point. Again, we'll start the general fund wrap-up tomorrow, go through any other decision points you have at this point, and we'll build these amounts back in. And I might note, for tomorrow, we'll have every department here that has operations in the general fund, and we'll anticipate, generally, hopefully fairly quickly, going through the long list of the now $1.1 million in programmatic reductions, as well as the priority listing, of which there were a handful, as well as the various strategies outlined, and, and getting the council's consensus on any of those that you prefer not to see. Okay?
Will we adjourn?
Thank you.
We are adjourned, thank you. Thank you.